I reside in Bourbon County for eighteen and a half years. With me is District Judge Sarah Stewart.
Good morning, Matt.
She's assigned down here to Bourbon County. District Magistrate Judge Rhonda Cole, who's originally from Bourbon County, and assigned to Bourbon County, and the clerk of the District Court for Bourbon County is Michelle Sharp. I thought I would start off with what the law says regarding the District Court.
Great idea.
Budget. KSA twenty-three forty-eight, and Joe, I'll give this to you, reads, except for expenses required by law to be paid by the state. The state pays our salaries. All the District Court personnel is paid by the state of Kansas. So that's not part of our budgets. The county doesn't pay our salaries. So the statute reads, except for expenses paid by law by the state, the Board of County Commissioners of each county have an obligation to adequately fund the operation of the District Court in the county and shall be responsible for all expenses incurred for the operation of the District Court in the county. And so if you want to pass that down to Joe so he can have that.
And Mark, you might want to pull that microphone a little closer to you.
Sure.
Because we're on the air now.
And so we're one of the few departments in a county that is mandated by the state of Kansas to be funded for our operations. And if you look at our proposed budget, the vast majority of what is budgeted for a District Court is for contractual services for attorneys. There's numerous state laws that require the county to appoint attorneys in certain type of cases. So exclude felony criminal cases. That's paid by the state of Kansas. That's not paid by the county. But the rest of these that's paid by the county are for attorneys to represent, for instance, child needed care cases. Judge Stewart does the child needed care docket. We have numerous child needed care cases where a child's taken into custody by the Department of Children and Families because of various reasons. The parents basically aren't raising their children in their best interest. And so a case gets filed when a child is removed from a parent. And by law, under the child needed care laws, we have to appoint an attorney to represent the mother, an attorney to represent the father, an attorney to represent the child called a guardian at line. Those are not paid for by the state. That's paid by the county because it's required by state law. That's one example of these contractual services with the local attorneys to handle those kind of cases. Besides those, we have what's called care and treatment cases. Somebody is likely to be dangerous to themselves or others. A petition gets filed, and the court has to appoint an attorney to represent that person in a child, in a care and treatment case. That again, by statute, is to be paid by the county. Misdemeanors where there's the potential of going to jail. A DUI, for instance, has a minimum mandatory jail time. By law, we have to appoint an attorney to represent that defendant in a DUI case. And so that again falls under our contracts with our local attorneys. Child support. When the state comes after a parent who's not paying child support, there's the potential for a contempt citation where you could go to jail. And so anytime you have a possibility of going to jail, we have to appoint an attorney to represent that person in that particular type of case. What am I missing? Whatever kind of cases?
Juvenile offenders.
Juvenile offenders. So you have a juvenile that commits a crime. By law, we have to appoint an attorney to represent that, what we call a juvenile offender, in that case. And so if you see in our proposed budget, the vast majority of our expenses paid by the county go to pay all these attorneys that represent these various different people in different types of cases. We, years ago, this is before I even came on the bench, started contracting with attorneys at a, what we consider a reduced rate than what they would normally charge so that we can manage and predict what our budget might be for the next year. So we have, for instance, two attorneys we contract with on misdemeanor cases where there's the potential of going to jail, like a DUI case. We have three attorneys that are appointed in the child, in the child needed care cases. One for mom, one for dad, a guardian at line for the child. And then any of these cases, we frequently have conflicts where our contracted attorneys go, well, I used to represent so-and-so, and ethically, I can't represent this particular person. So we have to go what's called outside of the contract and hire an independent attorney and pay them an hourly rate of what?
Twenty.
A hundred and twenty dollars an hour. That's the state rate that they pay in felony court-appointed cases. So we try to minimize that going outside of the contracts, but it occurs.
Before you go on, let me understand the contract. Is the contract a static amount for the year?
Yes.
You're going to represent everybody that we send your way, whether it's three hundred and sixty-five people or three?
That's exactly right. Unfortunately, it's usually closer to the three hundred and sixty-five figure than...
Well, Katie and Josh's kids have been misbehaving.
Yeah. So that is correct. So they, these attorneys agree under the contract to get paid X amount a month, no matter how many of those type of cases that they get. Occasionally, an issue comes up, like in a juvenile offender case where the juvenile is charged with a very serious crime, for instance, a rape, and it goes to a trial. They're entitled to have a jury trial. And I'll have an attorney come to me and say, look, I put in a bunch of hours to do a jury trial. We'll pay them a little extra for doing that. Otherwise, they'll drop off the contract. And I might add, we don't have attorneys knocking down the door to enter into our contracts for the obvious reason that they're not making a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. You know, they're just getting a flat fee, no matter how many cases they get.
My perception is there's just fewer people with their law license hanging their shingle out.
Oh, yeah. Nobody's coming to these small communities. And it's a statewide issue in the rural communities where we've been trying to help encourage, you know, new graduates to come to these rural communities. And they're not, they're not coming here. They're going to Kansas City, Topeka, Wichita, wherever.
They're going to get the money.
Yeah, they can make a lot more money. In our budget, you'll notice, I'm going to highlight a couple of areas that's an increase. The overall budget from last year, the commissioners were kind enough to give us three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. For twenty-twenty-six, we're asking for three thousand forty, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Approximately a little less than ten thousand dollars over what we were paid last year. And the breakdown, once you start going through our budget, the very first one is salaries where my two security officers, I say mine, they're county employees. They're security officers for the entire building. And they sit up there and look at monitors with cameras all over the building. And occasionally, they come running down here to the first floor because somebody's unruly. Occasionally, they're in my courtroom, trying to manage somebody that's unruly, or any of our courtrooms. They have not had raises in years. In fact, I think they're paid like around fifteen dollars an hour or less.
Or less.
Yeah, or less than that. Over the years, whenever I have an opening, I don't have very many applicants. And we have a tendency to hire retired law enforcement, retired probation officers that still need something to do. And so we have two security officers for the entire building that are county employees that were asking for a five percent raise for each of these two security officers. And that's reflected on that very first line where we're asking for an additional, what's it come out to? About three thousand, less than three thousand dollars a year?
Okay.
To give him a small raise.
So let me, let me understand here. That's where the security officers are on their salaries?
That's right.
On the, on the last page, on the security officer at zero, what?
Right, because this is more of the...
Expenses like?
Yes, just for the court, not for the security office.
They come running down for a security issue and get blood on their uniform. They need a new uniform.
Yes, we pay for it. It's in our supplies, so, yes.
So you're budgeting nothing, so they got to stay away from trouble, okay?
Right, yes.
Well, fortunately, we don't have a lot of problems with security. I don't know about the other judges. A year ago, approximately, maybe longer, I did have a defendant that I was sentencing to prison. And fortunately, he was handcuffed and shackled, and he went off. And they, he looked like he was starting to head towards me. I don't think he was. But they had to tackle him, tase him, it was a mess.
He was probably hoping for some YouTube or TikTok fame.
Yeah, and you know, at judges' conferences, they teach us when you have a security issue like that, us judges are supposed to go back through our door, back into our chambers, lock the door to be secure. I sat there and watched it. It was like watching a movie. Finally, when I saw it get totally out of hand, we have a secret button on our bench. I'd never used it in the eighteen years I've been on the bench. And I thought, this is the time I'm going to use it. I hit that button, within minutes, here's the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department. And after they removed him from my courtroom in a kind of a rough manner, the security was taken care of. But we don't have that happen very often.
Just wanted to make Lisa nervous for a while.
She probably couldn't care less whether I got injured or not.
She was ready for the crumble.
So anyway, that's reflected on that very first line, a small raise for my two security, or to the county's two security officers. We now have a transcriptionist. So we reduced on transcripts, which is about, I don't know, seven, eight, nine lines down. We have a transcriptionist paid by the state. And so we reduced a little bit the cost for a transcriptionist. I've talked about salaries of the attorneys representing juveniles, care and treatment. Small increase on down there for other service contracts where it says other specify. We went from seven thousand four hundred to nine thousand one hundred and ninety, if you see that on there. That is, we have service contracts with like advantage for the computers, service contract for like the postal machine. And that's something maybe the county might want to consider at some point, a universal postal machine.
Yeah, we have, we did at the college. We went that way because it was much cheaper just to get, yeah.
Yeah, we have a postal machine up there that, we have a contract with that company. Liberty, I made a note, Liberty. Liberty's our recording system, correct?
Yes.
So we have computerized recording systems in all three of our courtrooms. And that is reflected there, that small increase for that service contract. The next area that has a slight increase is office equipment from fifteen hundred last year to forty-five hundred for next year. That's like chairs, copy machine rental, various odds and ends like that. The cost keeps going up. And really, those are the only areas we're asking for an increase.
I think you should be complimented on the fact that it's less than three percent in this day and age with the way prices are everywhere else. I mean, that's, that's amazing.
And they can charge us whatever they want. See, advantage that we have the contract for all of our computers. I mean, they can come in and go, you know, we want a huge increase.
You're to be commended, the whole staff is.
We're kind of stuck with paying it.
Well, their actual expenses in twenty-twenty-one, their last year was less, less than it was in twenty-twenty-one. It's far less than ten percent from four years ago.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, you guys have been amazing.
Well, and in twenty-twenty-one is when we rented the courtroom.
Yes.
When we did, we did the courtroom on second floor and put that new courtroom on second floor.
Yeah, I don't know, if you've all come up and seen, we have three courts going on.
No, I've never been up there, Mark.
Yeah. That's a good thing, right? Just as a side note, Judge Stewart, didn't you have a jury trial scheduled to start today?
I'm supposed to have forty-five jurors here today.
Elevators are out. So what do you do? We're not going to make forty-five people, a lot of which will be retired, maybe even disabled, try to go up those stairs, up and down and up and down several times during the course of a day. And so Judge Stewart had to continue her jury trial. Yesterday, I did a settlement conference all afternoon, and two of the parties were in their nineties. And I agreed with one of the, it was a civil case, so it wasn't criminal. I agreed with the attorney for this couple that were in their nineties that their son could be power of attorney because he could walk up the stairs.
I was also set for an evidentiary hearing yesterday that we had to continue. A witness was not able to make it up to my courtroom. So it's not just jury trials. There's a lot of other hearings that we need to do. And again, going back to the record, when we were talking about that expense, if we have a record, we are required by law to maintain the record of what's happening in our courtroom. So it's not easy for us to just relocate to another area to have those hearings. There's also a constitutional right for the defendant in my case to be in the same room and see and hear that witness's testimony because there was a conversation, could we have the witness use the kiosk that had been set up? So there's a lot of factors that go into this. I'm set for another jury trial next week. Sixty-five jurors are supposed to be here Tuesday morning next week for a felony case, the case that was set today that we continued. If we are not able to proceed at our next setting, we might have speedy trial issues, meaning the state might be required to dismiss that case because they have not resolved it within their speed trial time limits.
What is, I mean, I was reading about the elevator. I mean, how long has it been disabled? I mean, I thought you had to have them fixed within twenty-four hours. I mean, I really did.
The American Disabilities Act requires it.
Yeah.
And it's been out this time, two weeks?
Just for, I think, it's just in a week.
A week?
A little over a week.
It's been over a week.
But last time was six weeks.
And they know when it's scheduled to be repaired?
Wednesday.
The information we received is...
As of right now, that we have been told.
We're hoping.
Well, we were told the part is supposed to arrive tomorrow. I think the understanding is it's supposed to be repaired. But, so my concern is, I'm being told it's supposed to be repaired. Part arrived tomorrow. I don't know what time. I don't know how long the repair is going to take. I have sixty-five jurors waiting to be told whether or not they need to be here on Monday. So I will be making that call Thursday morning so that my clerks have time to meet all of those individuals, whether or not they need to be present.
Who's in charge of saying that it gets fixed? Who's in?
Well, David Neville, head of maintenance, and he does a great job.
Yeah, I, I didn't know who the person was.
He's on top of everything. So, well, another issue, our air conditioning hadn't been working up there. I mean, it was hot in the clerk's office and in my chambers. The courtroom air conditioner is separate, and it works. But that has nothing to do with our budget. That, that's just some other concerns that arise in an old building like this.
And the only, the second floor is county attorney and a courtroom. And then third floor is court. The rest of the county offices are on first floor.
But I do think it's important to acknowledge there is a county office on the second floor.
Yes, there is a county office, which is the county attorney.
There's, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, you were fine.
I'm assuming there's costs associated with continuing these things. I mean, it's hard to put a monetary number on that, but...
There's mailings that are sent out. So you're using envelopes, postage, attorneys.
For the one that was sent today, that was a misdemeanor. Trying to remember who my, I believe that was a conflict attorney. So that was someone that we would be paying hourly. That now has to re, they give jury questionnaires a little bit of information about each of their jurors they're going to review. So when we reschedule, they get a whole new pool of jurors. So that's automatically going to be at least a couple hours of additional work that that attorney is going to do, plus any additional information that comes out, prep, things along those lines.
But again, that has nothing to do with our budget, but that's just sort of other concerns.
They discussed it, the commissioners, well over a million dollars of deferred maintenance on this building that we need to catch up on.
I can imagine.
Then things don't happen because it wasn't maintained well, so.
Do you have any questions about our budget, Joe?
We do have some questions directly from the commissioners. One of them is, do you have an Excel spreadsheet where you track your expenses?
Is that how we do it, Michelle? Michelle pays our bills. She's the clerk of the District Court.
I have a program that I go in and...
Budget.
Budget. And where I disperse my bills to be paid by the county. But as for a spreadsheet, no, I do not. It's just a program that I have.
That was just one of the questions that the commissioners had.
And this is, this one here is basically, this is where it shows what I have spent so far this year.
The last page.
And that's what we'll show the commissioners.
Yeah, yeah, that might be interesting.
So you're conscious all the time, yeah, where you're at?
The other major question that they have is, is there anything you can outsource with other departments that would help?
Sure.
Now, one of the things that you brought up was a postage machine.
Correct.
And if there was a mail room, would you be able to utilize the mail room?
We would, if that's what the commissioners want to go that direction and have a universal postage machine. We would simply, if it was set up down on the first floor, Michelle or one of the clerks would bring our mail at the end of the day down and run it through the postage meter and then take it to the post office. So that is something we could do. Right now, we have our own postage meter up there.
I wondered, did you think the treasurer has a postage meter also?
The treasurer has...
But it's probably two separate contracts. It's not one contract. You guys have your own, and they have their own, so...
And I think you just put in a code, and then it fills your department.
So I mean, you guys could probably, I'm assuming consolidate in one contract at least and say...
Sure, sure. We're a little different, Joe, than other departments.
Yeah.
We're a hybrid. Majority of our expenses are paid by the state, which is salaries for everybody up there, including our court service officers, our probation officers.
Which you have managed very well, and we appreciate it.
We've tried to, Joe.
We've got five more minutes.
Does that include benefits? The state pays the benefits as well?
Yeah, yeah, they pay our health insurance. They pay our benefits, our retirement, through a particular type of capers. Yeah, the county's not responsible for any of that, other than the two security officers, because they are county employees.
The other major question that they have is, are you under utilizing any assets? And it doesn't sound like to me that you are.
We would love to have some more assets that we could sure utilize, but really, no. A lot of those questions, Michelle and I went through those late yesterday that were submitted, didn't apply to our, our department, yeah.
Well, if you're underutilized, it's good news for the county.
Yeah.
Good news for a lot of people.
Yeah, that would be.
But we certainly appreciate the job that you do.
Well, thank you, Joe.
And we appreciate you bringing everybody down to the...
Sure, we take it serious. You know, in the past, we would come down to the commissioners for a budget meeting and present them whatever. This is actually more in-depth than when we go to the commissioners. Usually, we come in, we're only in there for five minutes. They run us on and bring in somebody else from another department and...
Well, you got five accountants around the table.
Yeah, good. Yeah, and it's going to help. It really is. Well, we do appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, thanks for your time this morning. Very nice to meet you guys.
Very nice to meet you.
We'll go back to court. Good luck.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Hope to not see you soon, Mark.
You'll be getting a jury summons. Oh, you're in the future.
I thought we were better friends than that.
Hey, I don't, for some reason, I can't find my list of questions. Do you have another topic? I don't know what I did with it. I've got it, I've got it here somewhere in this mess.
The last three are my questions. Anyway, I took out one or two that I didn't think were apropos. Yeah, don't know.
You know, I've got, I'm wondering, this postage machine is an excellent idea. We went to that at the college, and we have it in the bookstore. That's where we have it. And everyone takes their mail over there. And you put in a code, so it automatically charges to the business officer, the foundation, or whoever it is, based on what's running through. And then, well, we, we just have one person that takes it then. One of the maintenance crew takes it as they get off by and drops it off at the post office. And it was a big savings, I mean...
Yeah, it just becomes, it becomes a fight to, of logistics. Is it going to be on third floor or the first?
I'm surprised they can't put in two, two separate units. I mean, I don't know why they, yeah.
I don't understand this elevator, though. It just amazes me.
Yeah, I remember three or four years ago, they, they used to have a contract with the company. I don't know if they still do or not. They would come in and maintenance regularly. But the problem, two or three years ago, is getting parts. You know, you're two, three weeks out getting parts because it's so outdated.
Well, we go to the college, some dorm that wasn't working. Brian Thurston found someone here in, I want fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Found someone here in town that could redo them over and fix it and cost two hundred and fifty dollars.
Alan Eas is putting one in that building, has six. And he said that's putting behind at least five weeks with the elevator because of everything.
It's not the most up-to-date elevator either. I'm sure it's getting harder to stock parts for something of that age.
Well, you, I mean, Josh is right. And I'm trying to think of the name of the company, but they came twice a year and inspected. We have two elevators. One's in the library, yes, thank you, Otis. One's in the library and one's in the dorm. And they came twice a year and inspected those. And I wonder if they didn't get rid of that contract or something way back when things were tough, because we never had an elevator. We, I mean, I've been out since nineteen eighty-three. Okay, we never had an elevator go down. You know what I'm saying?
Well, if you maintain, you know, maintenance has not been happening in the United States at about any level. We just don't take care of what we have so that we can buy new stuff.
I think you're correct.
Spend more money. And it's not sexy to run on the platform of, I'm going to maintain everything.
Well, there's not a capital outlay fund in the budget either, I learned last night.
No, there's not, which is problematic.
Yeah, I couldn't believe that. I mean, I thought I was missing it. I really did. How many times I looked, trying to find it. See what it was called, something else.
Is, is, I know David's over that, but isn't, is Shane still over?
I think it falls under his...
Yeah.
I have no idea.
I'm pretty sure Shane's over all the buildings.
We can get some of those questions answered later, I'm assuming, here.
Yeah, he's...
He's the last one on the list.
I remember back then, they also said there may be only like one or two places that would service elevators around, if that, you know, and they have them.
Well, I'm sure they have to come from Canada somewhere.
Are you feeling okay about the process we set up?
I think it's going great. You had a great one to begin with because you're conservative.
Way to go, Joe.
You did good, Joe.
I didn't have to do anything. I didn't do at all.
I tell you what, they...
That's when you're a good boss, is when you don't have to do anything. Everything works.
Those people are wonderful.
I had a tooth pulled yesterday, so I get to sounding like a hushmouth. That's the reason. I don't have anything wrong with me. Well, at least not in that area.
Oh, man. Wisdom tooth?
No. I didn't want to take that root canal.
I understand. I think a very high percentage of SCK adults are missing a tooth, including me. Lost that tooth and said, I don't need it.
I said, it got me past midlife. I can do without it for the rest.
Hey, guys. I've got a couple less places I have to floss now. Yeah, we're ready.
Well, Jennifer's going to do the most of it because it's actually her budget.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm here to...
Passing them around?
Yeah, give backup.
Well, Jen and Patty, I'm the one that's supposed to interrogate you, so...
Okay, go right ahead. Bring it on.
Get my bear light bulb down here. Do you want to kick off, or do you just want to answer questions? What's your pleasure, Jen?
Okay, so I will kind of explain. The treasurer's budget is very simple. So two office staff are paid for out of the budget. Our contractual services, publication, tax statements, and copies. That's the only thing that we pay for out of there. And then we have commodities, so office supplies, paper and envelopes are basically what we purchase each year from that. Included with your packet, some state statutes that kind of outlines what is mandated. Publications are mandated for our office, and tax statements are mandated for the treasurer's office.
Okay.
Tax statements, it was about a five percent increase, we're asking for a seven percent increase for tax statements. That covers the cost of all of them, printing them, stuffing them in envelopes, shipping them, everything. And there is a statute, as well as an email here, for publication costs. We are asking for fifteen percent. We received notice from the Fort Scott Tribune that they've already increased to eight point eight percent this year. Fifteen percent is the max, though, and that's what we shoot for, because there are a lot of publications that we must follow.
And they usually increase at the max every year?
Yes, so, just wanted to provide some corviding evidence for that. Asked for a three percent increase for the office staff for wages. And Commissioner Beerbar has said he'd like to see all offices competitive. Three percent really won't even get competitive with other counties. Their starting wages, I know Patty reached out to many, many treasurers, sixteen dollars an hour to start, and that's our, our crew that's been there for years, don't make sixteen dollars an hour.
Understand.
So, with, I think that's, with that, if you want to ask some questions, we'll...
Do you have a budget? Do they have a proposal?
That's, that's right here.
This is it? This is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our office is a little different, because part of it is motor vehicle, and we get paid for that by the state.
Okay.
Not near enough, the county has to subsidize a lot of that. The county treasurers are working on trying to get more money out of the state, but the state's, it's fallen on deaf ears. You know, the legislators have to vote that through, and we just, we've been working on it for the last five years, still working on it. Because when we got our new system back in two thousand and twelve, the state gave us all our computers, all of our printers, all of that, and, you know, back then, we were getting paid, you know, a decent wage or amount for it. But since then, we have not had any raises since that, and they've quit providing our computers, the county has to buy the computers, we have to buy the printers, everything. So the county is subsidizing the state's, you know, business, and the state, you know, they get raises, but we don't. I mean, I'm talking about raises from fees and stuff like that, that the county's not getting any of that, so it's a big problem.
So where, where, where would you find the budget line item where we cover the, the excess costs of that? Is that in the treasurer's budget?
Actually, it comes out of, what we cover is in the treasurer's budget, but the rest of it comes out of the motor vehicle, because it's a separate...
What you, what you cover of the excess comes out of the treasures, is that in salaries? Or is that, what's that in?
Yes.
It's in salaries?
It's in salaries, yes, and the motor vehicle budget is not a, or I mean, the motor vehicle is not a budgeted item, so that's why we didn't bring it in, so...
Would you have an, just a guesstimate of how much of, of the two thousand and twenty-five expenditures were overages on the motor vehicle? Just to, no?
No, I really don't. You know, we usually give back about two thousand, or twenty thousand dollars to the county out of what they subsidize each year, because we have our budget, and then anything that's left over in June of the next year, we give back to the county. Usually, we give back about twenty thousand dollars. But they're covering all of the benefits of the, all of the employees and all that.
Would it make sense just to reduce the budget by that amount rather than the shuffle?
We could, but you know, there's always a chance if something comes up, that's the, the commission has no control over that fund until we turn it over.
Understand.
So if you have somebody that wants to spend it, they could end up not going back, you know, or if something goes wrong and we had to spend it, you know, there's, it's not guaranteed every year we'll give that back. Every year since I've been there, I think we've given back twenty thousand.
Sure.
That's not a budgeted fund.
Okay, that was my question, really, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So how many of your office staff are paid by the state?
Two.
Two, so you have two by the county and two by the state, okay.
So, I know that in recent years, that had, the motor vehicles transferred out of this building into the separate building, was that an additional cost that we had to absorb, or?
Driver's license and motor vehicle are not the same thing.
No, they're not.
There you go, okay, that's, that's where I got lost.
Yeah, the driver's license is totally state.
Gotcha.
We just do tags, you know, all that. Do you have overtime in your department? Very, very little, very little. And is this salary figure, does that include your benefits, or is that just straight salary?
No, doesn't include, doesn't include benefits. No, no salaries include benefits on these reports.
So what about the state employees? Does the state pay their benefits as well?
No.
No, the county's picking that up, okay.
Yeah, the county's picking all that up. So this is just two employees, this salary figure here?
Two employees, plus there is some for the treasurer gets split between that and some for motor vehicle. The three percent increase was strictly for office staff, not asking for any type of increase for the treasurer.
Okay, do you have a breakdown on what that hundred and thirty-two thou, I mean, hundred and thirty thousand this current year is? I mean, whi- which one's split? I'm trying to figure out how many employees that covers, is what I'm trying to do. It covers the treasurer and two employees. Did you put two and a half?
No, no, but that's what it would be, it was the treasurer and two employees.
Well, most of the treasurer's salary comes out of the treasury. They've subsidized ten thousand dollars out of motor vehicles, what the state pays the treasurer to supervise that office and handle it, so...
So, th- this is a historical question. In two thousand and twenty-one, the treasurer's department spent a hundred and sixteen thousand, and the budget this year in two thousand and twenty-five was a hundred and seventy-five. And Patty, do you know what was really kind of the, the drivers of that increased cost? The big jump was from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four?
Okay, and that was because they made all the employees forty hours a week instead of thirty-five hours a week, and increased their pay, so, because before that, we, they were all paid for thirty-five hours a week, they were full-time employees, but just thirty-five hours.
Okay.
So that's the major, anything else would just be, the only thing that we ever have in there goes up is publications and statements.
Okay, so then, also, when finance was broken out through two thousand and twenty-four, and then this year it was divided up, the two thousand and twenty-five was divided up between several departments, I think it was finance, and part of it went to the clerk's office, part of it went to the registrar of deeds, do you know how much of the finance budget you guys absorbed?
No, I don't.
I don't know.
Because it was ninety, it was ninety-five thousand in two thousand and twenty-four, and it was zero this year, in my understanding that those costs were divided up between several departments, but you don't know how much it absorbed at that?
No, I don't, yeah.
Do you know, if you got part of that, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You mean, part of the money from...
Absorb part of the cost.
The cost, oh. We've never budgeted for that, it's never come out of it or anything.
Okay. Any other questions for the treasurer's department?
On here, on this sheet that you sent out, you were asking about employees, and we are the bare minimum for employees for our office. We've gone, since I've been here, we've gone from seven employees in that office to four. And there's just, I mean, I do a lot of things that we used to have employees do as treasurer, I mean, she's going to be a working treasurer, because there's just not enough employees to do that, yeah. If we cut employees, it's definitely going to cut customer service, and if you're in here on some Fridays at the end of the month, we've got lines out the doors, it is, and it would really be a problem.
And the ladies give good service.
They do, they, we've got a good crew and, and, you know, everything's working smooth there, so...
No doors shattered lately.
Uh, no, no doors shattered. We did have a person die in the office a few weeks ago, that wasn't a good thing.
Client or employee?
A client. He come in and, ah, it was pretty traumatic for him.
Oh, man.
Too bad.
It's too bad.
I know, a while back, you guys used to do C D L tagging here.
Yes.
I mean, is that an expense, or is that a revenue?
That is definitely an expense, I mean, to, I don't, it would be tough to do it with the employees we have now, you know, and, and it's definitely not a make, money-making thing, it's nothing what the state seems to be.
As mentioned during the last budget discussion, that perhaps you might, you guys have a postage machine in, in your, your area?
Yes, it's, it's for the whole county here.
Okay, so the whole county, the whole floor uses it?
Yes, but we're the ones that manage it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we take care of that. Now, what if you want, when we had the district judge in here before, they have their own postage machine, and we suggested if there was another one, can anyone come in and use that machine? I mean, they put the code in and so, so when you, they have access to that machine? Yes, yes, it's out here behind my office, back here in the hall, and everybody else uses it. We just put in a code and they could do that and charge you for their budget. Thank you.
What do you need that you don't have?
Probably faster-working computers. We did get computers, new computers a couple of years ago, but they are not, they're, they don't work well with the state system. Other than that, I mean...
Tell me about that, they don't work well with the state system, or the county system, or the state?
The state.
Okay.
Yeah, because the state has to have certain guidelines on it and everything to, because of that program they run, and the state's program now, it was originated in two thousand and twelve, so it's getting kind of old.
It's getting dated.
Yes, it's way past dated, and there's no money in the budget, the state's budget to update that, so it's kind of getting Band-Aids and Band-Aids and Band-Aids, so it's...
Yeah, that's a dinosaur in computer years.
Yeah, yeah, it's frustrating.
How long had it been before they updated it?
Oh, my gosh, forever. But the one good thing about that was there, they could do things manually.
Yes.
And kind of do workarounds, we don't have that with this new system, no.
My mother retired from that office in two thousand and twelve, when they did the conversion.
I know.
That was what cost her retirement.
There was a giant exodus in two thousand and twelve when we went over to that new system, because we had, and it took a long time to get a department where we've got stable people in there now, so, yeah, we appreciate that.
Any other questions for the treasurer's department?
No, the treasurer's budget, we're real frugal in that office, we try to use everything we can, you know, and I know Jennifer, you know, she'll continue that, she's been in the office before, so it's a good, you know, it's going to be a good fit for her.
The, the salaries for the, the ones the state paid, when you do an increase, how does, I mean, how does that affect the two paid by the state reimbursees?
Well, the state just pays us money, and then it comes out of that.
So that will stay the same, even if they get raises, the, the money you receive from the state will stay the same?
Yes.
Or it won't increase?
No, 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 nothing increases the money from the state at this time.
So the, the two they're paid by the state is not a hundred percent funded, it's just a certain amount?
Well, it, get right, exactly, and it's like, I mean, we subsidize part of ours, but like Johnson County subsidizes over a million dollars for their, yeah, tags, and so does Wichita, that's what, I mean, the big states are really, but it's still, it hurts all of us little counties too, so, you know, but the treasurer's working as hard as they can, but...
The hidden state tax.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Mandates, unfunded mandates, I guess that's what that's called.
Yes, and especially when they're pushing more and more work on, on counties, the state, the web tags, they're really, I think, kind of promoting that, here, renew online, what they don't tell you is, those come into the county. So our clerks are printing off the reports, validating the reports, printing off your registration renewals, and then the county's eating that cost to mail them out to the customers. So there's a lot of things like that that we're not, we're not getting an increase, we're not getting the increase to cover our postage.
The work's the same, but the postage, I mean, you have more expense?
Yes, yes. How much does the state reimburse you? What, what figure do you get a year? Oh, I don't have that here, I would have to get that.
That's not in this budget, yeah.
But, you know, like I said, usually, the last few years, we've been able to give back about twenty thousand dollars, you know, at the end of the year, out of our budget. So, you know, the things that had to come out of that budget are also like conferences, you know, we go to the treasurer's conference, that's three times a year, and that's for education and everything, and then as much as our supplies as we can, because, you know, she didn't supply, budget much in there for supplies and stuff, comes out of the motor vehicle budget.
Saying this for Mr. Walker's benefit, but those Democrats that are running Topeka, giving us all these unfunded mandates.
I'll agree.
No public comment, no. I got the microphone, man.
I was just going to say that, you know, that they...
Can't take any public comments, Clint, sorry. I shouldn't have drug you into it, sorry. This is Patty's time, so...
Yeah.
So, okay, well, we appreciate you coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Should, I'm sure we'll have follow-up questions, should that be directed to Jen, or?
Either one of us, it don't matter, yeah, I mean, like I said, it's actually her budget, because I'll be out of here in September or October, so...
October, okay.
Yeah, so it's her budget.
I would like to kind of go over some of the questions, we've touched on a lot of them.
Okay.
You know, the, that was sent out, so if our budget were, were reduced, where would we cut? Right now, the only place that we can cut is personnel, and as Patty's touched, they lost three positions in the last ten years.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that hurts. All of our personnel are cross-trained, so we don't feel that they're underutilized. And then our overtime, our overtime is at a minimum, we stagger shifts, so during tax time, somebody comes in late one day and stays late, and so that we were trying to cut that. Our tax statements, when I first started at the county, it was about a week, we'd have a long table set up in the back, we would print our own statements, mail them, stuff the envelopes, we have outsourced that to save, so now the county's not having to purchase the paper, the envelopes, pay for our copies, pay overtime for the employees, or hire somebody part-time to come in. I think we've really tried to do what we can to, to cut, to cut our costs.
And the company we use to mail our state, print our statements and mail them, they get a big postage discount from the post office, so it covers a lot of that cost.
Yes, they, since we have bulk for that. And then, what resources do we have to try to save money? Right now, we have a Quill membership, I know when I was clerk, I had a Quill membership, so that's where we purchase a lot of our paper. Like, my membership was twenty-five dollars a year, the first month that I bought paper, it more than paid for that membership. They have different levels of membership, so maybe that's something that they can look at, see if we can buy their gold membership type thing and, and save, save county-wide to purchase thing, I know that's the main, the main cost for our, our office is paper.
I think Quill sets up, because you get a cer- certain amount, and then over that, you pay extra, right?
Yes, but we, I mean, just...
But you're right, county-wide, it could...
Right.
Because paper's got to be, I mean, imagine a huge expense for, I know the city was...
So that's, that was, I think, one, one idea that we had, but definitely, any questions anybody has asked, we will be happy to show you, show you office, show you kind of what we do, so you get an idea of difficulties we're facing, or some of the increases we're asking for.
Are you still accepting tax payments in different locations during those two times of year, or did you guys stop doing that?
No, we still have done that.
Has that been successful for?
It really, the main, the one that is most successful is Bronson, of course, it's the furthest away, and people, you know, a lot of people that live in Bronson work in Iowa or something, so it really helps them, but, yeah, we do that, but that's at no cost to the county.
Right.
You know, we just go out there one night during, oh, the winter, and one night during the spring taxes and, and pick them up there, so...
One night?
Yeah, we'd go from just a couple of hours from five to seven, and, you know, and it's published, and they all come out to the community, oh, haul and pay their taxes.
That's a service I do plan to continue for our residents.
Thank you. Anything else for the treasurer's department? Thank you for preparing and taking time with us, appreciate it, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Yes, if you have any other questions, let us know, or any suggestions.
Now, you ladies do good, you have to put up with my stuff all the time.
There you go.
Every time you get a call, Josh.
Yeah, certain customers. Yeah, certain customers.
I forgot about Josh, which we're gonna approve the raises.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
So you're up next, Carolyn.
I don't see him here yet. Actually, his partner, okay, but. Are you here in Bill's place?
Uh, no, he's gonna be here too.
Oh, okay.
I have a problem when anyone says give me back money, because it's not their money back, okay?
Yeah, well, that's, that was duly noted.
And that was the biggest thing with the, the city, you know, because a lot of times there's extra money in the budget, another department says, well, you have extra money here, so you can, so each department's holding on to their thing, and it's just become a battle between departments.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
And that's where the commission needs to step up and say.
Yeah, yeah. And sometimes they share that extra budget with one another too, which.
But it is nice giving back to a point, because a lot of places would just eat it, find someplace to spend it.
The federal government will buy whatever they can, so that they don't, their, their fears that their budget will be reduced the next year if they don't spend it.
We talked to the city about some kinda rewards program, even though that sounds weird, but.
Those rewards programs were pressing the word of the city.
We used to like have what we had in the president's budget, we put what we call contention fund. And that's where we put money in case a tragedy happened or something went wrong, or someone just completely ran out and it was a legitimate concern or whatever.
Well, and that's usually why you have your cash carryover, I mean, to those things, but.
When I worked for the feds, it was always a big state meeting at the end of the year to try to spend up whatever money was left in the budget, you know?
Oh, it just makes me sick.
Yes, me too. I mean, I just don't, I don't understand it. I really don't understand it.
I think my lovely spouse wants to have those kinds of meetings at the end of every year, but.
I'm gonna have to go in the car and get my jacket. I left my jacket in the car.
Must be colder over there.
Cause I wore the long sleeve top this morning, but I may have to go out the car and get my shirt up for.
I don't know where it's going from, but I feel it.
Right there.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we got a power break for lunch, but I guess we can't go to lunch together, so.
Joe.
I can't eat her anything but like potatoes, so.
Well, I'm sure not going with you then.
I can see she's going to Wendy's.
There you go.
It's not soup season, so.
If I want mashed taters, don't you, yeah? That baked would be too hard.
My favorite potato is a baked potato, though. I love baked potatoes.
The deli has good baked potatoes. You ever had one from ours?
Yes, yes, that's wonderful. We just get that, I used to get that for lunch probably once a week.
So, uh, just talking a little bit about the culmination of this process, I think what we do is combine everybody's budget and try to get a, a pro forma twenty-twenty-six budget with all line items filled in. And see where that leaves us in terms of the mill levy and, and all that. And then make a recommendation on where we see the mill coming in. Is it revenue neutral? Is it static? Is it a raise? And again, we can always go down after the recommendation, but we can't go back up.
Right.
So, um, and that needs to be set, I think, July fourteenth, around there? Is that?
They have, I think they have to have it filed by the sixteenth or something.
Sixteenth, okay.
I know there's a timeframe where they have to have it filed in mechanic clerk's office.
So I'm.
Yeah, that was our deadline. I think the twentieth is when it has to be.
Actually filed by.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's correct.
So, um, today's the first, and so, uh, I'm thinking about the next meeting on the ninth, at the, at the same time, four-thirty, that we normally had, and we try to put all this together and, um, see if we're, we have any information gaps. Kinda make a list of the comments about each budget that we have. Uh, for example, Carolyn's comment about, is it, is it the right method to give back, to budget too high and then give back? Is that the right methodology? Because that impacts the mill, you know?
Right.
We're anticipating higher expenses and it didn't happen, so the mill is essentially too high.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty thousand's not gonna make a big difference, but if it's happening in multiple departments.
Yeah, I don't know why you wouldn't just take it off next year's budget.
And, and that's what I ask.
Unless they are using it, unless that's the thing, the commissioners want them back to use it somewhere else, like.
Well, which, I'm not sure that's kosher either.
No, not at all.
One of the things I would like to see that we don't have in here is any monies that is not, kind, that doesn't come from property tax.
We got a chair for you up here, Bill.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, all the other revenue that they receive, whether it's sales tax or whether it's reimbursement, the district court gets reimbursed by the state, they get reimbursed by the state, you know, where's that figure at? That's coming in, I haven't, I, and I, I looked.
It's not part of our, but it's not part of our financials or budget.
Right, but, but the part of the expenses are.
Yeah, the excess are.
Yeah, and that's what I, I, that's what I, I don't have.
And that's why I was trying to get at with Patty.
Yeah.
And it's, it's in their budget, but she doesn't know how much it is.
No, but that's what I wonder, who can give us that? Do we have to go to the, do we have to call the auditor?
We're gonna have to go to.
Auditor?
A lot, well, we're gonna have to go to Susan. A lot of this, to fine tune, we're gonna have to go.
Good, good. I think that makes sense, because I, I just was trying to figure that out when I was reading through here, and I, there's different points that has a little bit here and a little bit there and like that, but.
Right.
You guys all here, Bill?
Yes, sir.
You wanna start five minutes early?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for not wearing a weapon up here. But you can't see. Well, you can't see mine either. Ooh, I shouldn't say that. Well, welcome. Just so you know, we've divided up the, uh, the budgets per, per individual here, so that we can divide and conquer. And Carolyn has led the charge in your area, which you probably already know, cause I think you've already met with Carolyn. So, we'll just let you guys start out, kinda give us your, your budget numbers, and then we'll ask questions when you guys have presented.
Okay. Well, first off, thank you for allowing us to come before the committee to discuss the budget for the, uh, Bourbon County Sheriff's Office and corrections for the twenty-six year. Hope that we can come to an agreement of, uh, what is needed for the operations of the Sheriff's Department and also for the jail. As everybody is aware, uh, Telly Baker has been hired by the Sheriff's Office to, to go over previous budgets that has been submitted to the, uh, Commission for Approval for Operational and Stuff. So, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ben Hart, and he will bring to your attention some issues that he has found. And I hope that we are able to understand what is going on in the past, so that we can, uh, work together as a team, cause there's a lot of stock hold, a lot of stockholders that it will affect, and kinda go from there, okay? So I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Ben and have him present, and if you have any questions, of course, please ask.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, absolutely. So, we started, uh, fall last year, uh, working on Bill's budget. And just as an overview, Bill's got a unique budget. A lot of it is determined by state statute on, on what he's gotta do, the funding, uh, the whole nine yards. He's got a number of funds that are unbudgeted, that's got cash in them, but they're very restricted as to what their use can be, and, and he's really the only one that can tell, determine what that is applied for. His primary budget is in the public safety fund, and then we come, went through some of this with Carolyn, which is, is, it was a great conversation. Public Safety Fund, Fund is where his operations are, both operations and cor- uh, the corrections budgets are, are both in there. So that's predominantly where we're gonna be talking about. Uh, that fund is, is supported by a number of different revenues, most of which is gonna be, um, most of which is gonna be levy, your ad valorem tax. Uh, and when we, uh, uh, I can't speak to why, but I, one of the things, well, we do, what I do for a living i- is this. We do a lot of outsourcing, we do for the city, uh, we run their budget for them, uh, as Josh knows. But we run their budget for them and, 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 uh, I used to, I spent fifteen years as CFO, uh, on a city for, for budgets. So it's kinda what I do, weird like that. Um, so what we noticed is on the, on the levy, the levy had gone down for a number of years, uh, and it had gone down around three mills. Uh, and that three mills, I think, over the course of time, was around three hundred thousand, uh, on an annual basis accumulated. But up to that point, the decrease that, that was coming out is, was around three hundred thousand. Now, at the same time, there's money being transferred over from the sales tax fund, uh, supposedly for capital, only for capital. Uh, and there is a reliance or dependency on that at some level for capital. Uh, but the decrease in the levy actually took revenue away from non-capital, uh, needs, his operations. And that's not something I don't think he signed off on, cause he was as surprised as I was when I brought it to him. So that was one issue. Uh, the second is we were able to take a little deeper dive.
Can I stop you, Ben? Do you know, uh, what years those, that happened? Apparently, it was a number of years.
The last three years.
Last three years. So like, it's one mill reduction in a year or?
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't just so much per year. I mean, there was a total of three mills, and it was, there's almost three mills the very first year. And I was told that was because they got money from somewhere else, but that money from somewhere else did not come into the sheriff's budget that I could find, okay?
Gotcha.
You're gonna know more than I do, so.
Very well put. You remember a lot. Uh, yeah, and I'm pulling up that document, but, uh, that's the line share of what his operations are, are funded. So in, uh, budget year twenty-two, uh, his, uh, levy was, uh, ten point oh seven. Uh, twenty-three was ten point oh seven nine, I'm gonna get detail right. Um, I'm sorry, that's the general fund. Uh, the fund one twenty levy. In twenty-two was fifteen point five, and twenty-three, it went down to thirteen point seven. Uh, twenty-four.
Two point eight mills, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-four dropped to twelve point four. Twenty-five has popped back up to thirteen point three. Uh, and for his budget, uh, we don't budget the revenue side, just don't think we do. But being the mind I am, I, we took a crack at it anyway, right?
Sure.
And, and that way we could, if Susan agrees with it, that's great. If not, you know, whatever. Um, but we just held it flat at this point, just to show what that levy, what that funding source might be. What, what we see in the budget though, and he can speak to this, the, his priorities or his moving parts that are gonna be more sensitive is obviously gonna be salaries for one, and capital is the other one. Those are the two, uh, fast-moving, if you will, across the board, uh, paying and keeping people in the Sheriff's Department opposed to going to Highway Patrol or the city or anywhere else. Uh, so that was one issue. Uh, capital's just, just revolving, you know, needing to replace equipment and cars.
Yes.
Uh, and he's met with, uh, Enterprise Leasing, and we work with Enterprise on other clients too, uh, which they can find the cars and actually get the replacements done on a timely basis, uh, and give us a, a roadmap of what that looks like out into the future. Uh, so essentially, it'd be leasing the cars for about a three-year window, because they'll last maybe three to four years, depending on how long or how hard you run them. Uh, and that's what Enterprise does. They just keep track of all the miles and the maintenance and everything on each one of those vehicles. That's kinda nice about it.
You can, kind of an estimate, Sheriff, as to how many miles a year a car gets used?
Well, that's a good question, and I don't have that answer at this present time.
It's gonna be more hours than it's gonna be miles, right? Cause you get, you get cars.
Finally timed, yeah, finally timed, which, uh, like I said, that's a good question, and I apologize for not having that answer.
It's okay.
But it did open the door, that we did meet with Enterprise this morning. We had a meeting with them at the Sheriff's Office. And one of the things that I wanted to bring to either the, uh, Commission, is that Enterprise will come in and explain what their program actually consists of. It's very interesting, so if we choose, which I'm leaning towards a hundred and ten percent, once, once you hear the presentation or whoever hears the presentation, they will document everything in regards to that vehicle, as, as services and stuff. So let's say, they will track the maintenance record of that vehicle, and they'll also track the, uh, the value of that vehicle itself too. And once that, uh, maintenance record exceeds what the value of that vehicle is, which their documentation is, then they'll come and say, Sheriff, we have a, you have a problem here. You're spending more money on the mechanical side of, of the maintenance than you are than what the vehicle is actually worth, is actually worth. So they have that program in place and stuff like that. Plus, they've also have it set out to work, and everybody can agree, the county never really had a three, five, or ten-year plan. With Enterprise, they will sit down and say, this is your three-year plan, this is your five-year plan, this is what is expected in three years, so you can be prepared to go in front of the Commission and say, here, this is what you need to do, which I think is a great program to, because then it takes the burden off of me of trying to figure out, not saying that I'm lazy, but I'm just saying, I have other things I'd rather be doing than vehicles and stuff. But, you know, to answer that question, that's something I need to get with the Commission to say, hey, they're gonna come up here in a couple of weeks. And I will also throw out there for a plug too, uh, they also met with Road and Bridge. You guys are meeting with them later on this afternoon. They also met with Road and Bridge, and they have an outstanding, uh, program for them too, to get them back on track as well.
Well, capital outlets need to be planned.
Yeah, absolutely.
And reserved for, and.
Absolutely.
I assume squad cars get harder use than the typical consumer car.
Exactly, yes, and that is true. And like I said, you know, several weeks ago, you know, your typical patrol car equal to the soccer mall, taking your kids to the soccer or basketball or baseball game is totally different than a patrol vehicle. And I think I use this example, and I thank the world of KHP, I love them to pieces, and I'll back them up. And if the military saying goes, I have their six if they need it, and my office has their six. But when you're driving down a road and you see KHP go flying by you at warp speed, it's because he's leaving one county, trying to get to four counties away to answer that, and once that vehicle gets to that fourth county or wherever they're going, that vehicle then sits there and parks and idles for an hour or two, depending on what it is. So that causes more thing. Now, you mentioned capital outlet, uh, capital improvements and capital outlet. I will tell you this now, and the commissioners are probably, will be watching this later on. There is a major, major capital outlet project that will be brought to the Commission here within the next several weeks. Uh, what that is, is in regards to radios, communications. Right now, the bill, what I have included with, uh, to get these radios, and there's several stockholders that need to, uh, that will take place, and I'm trying to get them on board. And of course, number one is the Sheriff's Office. Number two is the Police Department, Fire Department, Rural Fire Department, Emergency Management, and EMS, okay? CGIS, and I forgot what the acronym is, government's great for acronyms and breaking things down. CGIS has basically put the burden on the state of Kansas that all law enforcement, law enforcement, radio traffic has to be encrypted. So when I pick up that mic and I start to communicate, that information has to be encrypted from my patrol car, from the patrol, or the mobile radio that I have to dispatch, it has to be encrypted to where nobody can listen to that conversation and stuff. Now, with me making that comment, I know there's gonna be an outcry with the public, but that CGIS and that's the federal government, the FBI, that's pushing that. As I said earlier, it's for law enforcement, okay? I mentioned those other entities too, EMS, fire, and rural fire, emergency management. My idea or philosophy behind that, why do I wanna separate them? We should all be in the same basket, playing in the same sandbox, so I know what the other person's doing. Now, we can switch, it depends on how the system is set up, it depends on how we can communicate with them. That's later on down the road. But right now, we are looking at vendors to come in to actually do kind of a three-phase. Uh, the first one is basically to come in and see what our needs are, to talk to the stockholders, the commissioners, law enforcement, EMS, the general public, what do you need? This is what your problem is. Phase two, they put out the RFPs for you, so they know exactly what is needed for the radios, and when those RFPs come back in, they will look at that and go, well, wait a minute, Sheriff, you don't need this. There's too much stuff, so you can take that out, but you do need this part of the equipment, so they need to put that back in. So they'll look at the RFPs and make sure, go by line item by line item and say, you need this or you don't. And then in the last phase, they're the ones who will actually oversee the implementation, implementation, is that the word I'm looking for?
Implementation.
Yes. Other project itself, to make sure that the radios go on, you know, actually start up, go on air or on service, to make sure that they're working. If not, then they go back to that vendor and say, nah, wait a minute, you screwed up. This is what it's supposed to be. It's kind of a punch list at a construction site. You walk through a building, they go through that punch list to make sure everything is, 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 uh, done, needed to the specs and stuff like that. That's basically what the third phase is, is kind of a, is a punch list type thing. This, for this vendor to come in and do this study is, is gonna cost. And I'm trying to figure out where to get that money from. Now, like I said, I've met with the other entities, the, the chief of police, the fire chief, and I'd asked them, let's share that cost. They're looking into that. They need to take it to their commission, which I understand. But if there's an issue that they can't make it, I gotta figure out something. Cause number one, my, number one priority for my guys is safety, for everybody, that's safety. And when this presentation actually kicks off, probably here, I might have to do it sooner now since the cat's out of the bag. There's an incident of a video that I'm gonna show to the public or to the commissioners. And I want the, the commissioners and the public, the audience that's sitting here, and I'll try to get it posted online, of an incident that happened with one of the deputies. And it's about a minute and forty-five second raw video of something that happened to a deputy. And then I want people to say, okay, now think about this for a second. So that's coming down the pipe too. But now to back up, your, the capital outlet is of course number one. Is actually, there's a tie. There's vehicles and there's the radio communications. We both need those, especially uh, with our vehicles. I think they said our average year of a vehicle was two thou-
Twenty fourteen.
Was the average age was twenty fourteen. And here we are at twenty twenty-four, knocking on the door of twenty twenty-five with a lot of miles on them. So, but anyways. So we, but those goes back to sheriff, what do you need to do? Well, we're kind of out of money.
You said this was a statute. It was a mandate.
CGIS, yes.
Key, yes, CGIS is, yes.
I'm sorry?
CGIS is, yeah.
Okay, so is this mandated for state, I mean for?
All law enforcement.
City, all, all, all.
Yeah, all law enforcement.
All law enforcement is gonna have to go this?
Yes. That's the reason why I included the police department in the conversation. Actually, everything was supposed to be in place by this year, but KHP is the one that's doing their first audit. And so we're all kinda sitting back. The other question that's gonna come up and people are gonna go, is there grant money for this? No, there's not grant money for this. Reason why? Cause you will have every law enforcement agency in the state of Kansas applying for that grant. Okay? So the grant money is basically, it's back on yours. It's your basically typical everyday operation expenses, the radios. So.
So let me, let me stop you there. Just a technical question. You mentioned video a second ago and then radio. Are, are car systems, there's video on the car, there's radio on the car, and then there's body cams. Are those integrated systems or are those separate systems?
They're separate. We can integrate them through our, if we have our mobile data terminal set up for them, that isn't an IT concern, which that's gonna be a conversation later on, cause apparently the county has a company coming in and doing a.
So they're not sold integrated? Do you have to?
Yeah, but when you pull into a, you pull into the sheriff's office in the, in the parking lot, you have a, uh, assist, it starts to, I can't think of the word, the terminology, it slipped my mind. Once the deputy pulls into the parking lot, that video is now being pulled from the car to a cloud, to the cloud. So then they can go back in and pull that video out. Uh, the body cams all, it's the same thing. If this, if it's docked in the station, if it's docked in the car, it, that, the video is pulled into the cloud.
Okay.
So, sorry, Gorgo.
No, I, cause all I was thinking of is if you're buying the radio, should you think about?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the cameras itself, the, the, there's, uh, uh, the in-car cameras, there are already audio insights. So they hear the communication taking place.
So it's a separate audio then?
Yes. And also that's, also the suspect or the arrestee that's being transported, they have a camera on there and it's also being kept recorded. Sorry. No, you're good.
That's okay. You sort of, between the two of you, you got an answer. So.
Okay.
His, uh, his total budget, like I said, is, is split between two, two, uh, two basic divisions. For the layperson and me, I call one of them the operations. It's more patrol. It's non, non-corrections basically. Uh, it's one point, basically one point four million dollars. On the correction side, correction side is about a one point one million. And the things that tend to grow the quickest in our experience, both, both cities and counties, obviously that you can somewhat control, obviously salaries and, and then capital. Some of the other things that kinda that can grow, that's funded out of this budget is, is inmate costs. Inmate meals have gone up ten thousand dollars for the last three years, each one of those years. Medical, depends on who they get in jail. Uh, that tends to go up and has for the last two years. Uh, and then the transportation and, and obviously jail, jail repairs, but related to inmates. Now what they do, the sheriff's office does is bill back out for the housing of those inmates. Uh, and, and depending on who they, who they, and he can tell you more about it than I could, cause I hope to never be in there. I'm enforced cut a lot, but not that way. If they accepted a, a customer from another jurisdiction, you can pull back out. I've seen former employers, big bill back.
Question about medical, would, would that also include mental health?
That's part of the, part of the services, yes.
Hey Bill?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may?
Yeah.
The, the odd thing about the corrections budget is the jail medical is included into the budget currently. That to me is, should be separated out to a separate budget itself. Cause Lord forbid if we have somebody with a, a bad pregnancy or upper heart surgery, things of that nature, just on the medical side alone. If that comes in at a half a million dollars, that's why I got three quarters of that budget, just on one incident. So when I worked as a sheriff in Allen County, that was allowed a separate budget, was my jail medical. That way it didn't take a big hit. My budget, operational budget in the correction side didn't take a big hit. Should we have a, a bad incident come up, we had an inmate that we were housing for another, another agency, was on a shot that they had to take. And that shot alone was ten thousand dollars per shot. And they had to have it three times a week. So those are costs that we can't expect to incur. And I'd hate to see that our budgetary restraints being compromised and go over by them because of a medical issue.
And you're bringing up one of the issues, the other issues that we, we saw is within this fund, I, I don't, pardon me, I don't know if the county has a fund balance policy or not. Regardless, a fund like this, just exactly what he's saying, to have a reserve set aside, and you brought this up in our meeting, having a reserve set aside for that specific thing, uh, that you can argue until the cows come on as to how, what size that is, right? I mean, it could be a half million, it could be a million, it could be twenty-five thousand. It just all depends. And, and obviously in the past, and I don't think it's anybody's fault, it's just been run kinda skinny. The reserves are really skinny.
We've, we've, commissions vary. Some, some commissions are reserve friendly and some aren't.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been on the not side for a while.
Yeah, if you set aside that budget, like he's talking about, set it aside and have it only allocated to that, now you got something to point to.
I have a question.
I assume, I'm sorry Katie, when, when the, uh, if we separate out the medical side, you've got those expenses segregated on your expense sheets. And so that would be easy segregation.
Yep.
Logistically, I'm sorry. Go ahead Katie.
When you're housing out of county inmates, do you have control of what you charge or is that mandated by the state? So you have the ability to price some of those things into that, okay, that's a question.
And since he's bringing up medical and somebody will probably answer this question or ask this question, if not, then I'll go ahead and ask it anyway. Inmate medical expenses and stuff, what we have done is that we usually, we attempted several times to take the medical expense, turn it over to the county attorney's office. And I'm not throwing the county attorney under the bus by no means whatsoever. But we take those medical expenses, turn it over to the county attorney's office. So for that inmate, that's part of their restitution is to pay the county back based on the medical that they received in the, uh, in the facility while in our, in our custody and stuff like that. Who makes the final decision in regards to the restitution, if that's gonna be paid or not. Once again, I'm not throwing the district court judges under the bus, but they're the ones who make the ruling that this expense of medical should be part of their restitution and stuff like that. So we have numerous, numerous, numerous times attempted to throw those medical bills over to, you know, the county attorney's side as part of restitution. Now, for an example, if an inmate has a, a tooth, a toothache or something, we take him to the dentist and the dentist says, you have a cavity. You need a crown of some sort or whatever they do. They don't get that crown. That tooth is pulled. They have that choice. Either you can live with the pain and we'll give you aspirin, or you, you can have the tooth pulled. So they don't come in and get dentures and all that other stuff. It's, it's addressed that way. So I just wanted to clear that up, that we try to do everything we can to get that money back.
And, and on that topic, if on the rare occurrence that an inmate has insurance coverage, who pursues that? Is that the county attorney as well or is that?
Well, that's kind of a good question. I think, uh, Luke has a question. I think I heard, heard his voice say, Bill.
When we house other inmates from different counties, they pay us back for all medical expenses. So they pay for their own medication. They pay for jail, uh, medical visits, dental visits, everything. We just bill them separately on top of the housing charges and they give us one big check.
So your housing covers basically feeding them and?
Yeah, basically feeding them and basic needs.
Giving them a lot. So.
How many do you have from other counties now? I mean?
We typically have twenty from one and ten to fifteen from another.
Good, cause that's income coming in.
Twenty-five percent of our.
So back on the original question, if a local prisoner has insurance, is, is that pursued by your department? Is that, should be pursued by the county attorney?
Both. Um, we try. Um, if they have Medicaid or state-funded, we, I just found this out from medical yesterday. If they have state-funded insurance, we can't do anything about it. We have to pay for it. Uh, but if they have private insurance, we can try to go after their private insurance as well.
So Medicaid, you can't go after, but if it's Medicare.
Private insurance, you can.
You can, okay.
And, and kind of also put this in perspective, the ones that do receive services, we try to get them billed in the Medicaid rate so that we're not having that absorbent cost. So when we get the bill, the, the front office, Luke's, uh, support team will resubmit the bill to Medicaid to get them Medicaid rate and to reduce costs. So that we're, like I said, we're not spending a lot of money that way. So we, we're trying to do everything we can to cut the cost when it comes to the inmates.
It's fifteen dollars to do that every time.
Okay. You're up.
Uh, yeah, you've, I'm open to questions at this point. There's not a whole lot more.
What percentage of the budget is salary?
So their salary for operations is nine hundred, well, it's a million dollars basically. That's with overtime included in it. That's on the operations side. Uh, the correction side is around six hundred and, six hundred and forty thousand. So out of the two point four million, there's a million six.
Did you guys bring a written?
I've got this on my laptop.
Is that something you can provide to me?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is it this?
I guess.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
I'll leave this with Carol. Carol can run the, uh, copies off.
That's what, that's what I'm speaking from here.
Yeah.
So there's that right there.
And, um, I know the county commissioner asked us to break things out. And that's, I started doing that for Bill just in his task so he can see where his costs are, right? And then that request came in. So that's what he gets. That's what he gets on a monthly basis for, for his cost. And it, that breaks out a lot of his costs and what we're talking about already, oh, the inmate, you know, medical inmate, uh, transportation.
Got three more minutes. Anything else?
What kind of an expected savings are you gonna see from the fact that you're switching over to Johnson County now instead of?
Johnson County is, they're charging us a hundred and fifty dollars per, per juvenile. Leaving, leaving, and I will pour this email to the county clerk, to the county commissioners for the, and the clerk to have on file. But I wanna make a note and document if they cannot respond to that email, okay? It's just for information only. But I got an email from the individual that if we pull from the contract, they will charge us five hundred and eighty-three dollars per day, per juvenile, as long as that juvenile's down there. So we don't send that many juveniles to, to our, on the sheriff's side. And I don't think the police department sends that many juveniles down there. And also, once again, the sheriff costs, we are, as the county is responsible for juvenile detention. The city has no part in participating in, in those funds. There's certain statutory requirements that the county's responsible for, and that's one of them. So, but, uh, if you want to go more into detail about that, I would have to direct you to undersheriff Davidson, cause he has done an outstanding job of looking into the juvenile detention center, the cost savings and stuff like that. So that was one of his projects and he's done an outstanding job. So kudos to him. And if you want some more in-depth questions and stuff, he'll be more happy to answer those for you.
Have, have you reflected that in your budget though? Cause it was just passed last night.
The juvenile detention? I'm not responsible for the juvenile detention funds. That's up to the county commissioners. That is separate. So I, I'm just trying to find ways to help the county save money. And since we as law enforcement deal with juveniles on a daily basis and stuff like that, I think we should have the input as to where those juveniles should go and that cost. Does that make sense?
Yeah, juvenile detention's part of the general fund.
Yes, yes. So, but, uh, I know that we're winding down for time. Uh, Mr. Molly said three minutes. One thing I would say, uh, is that with Ben sitting here to my right, there's probably been some bad taste in the general public, but I will tell you right now, Ben has been a lifesaver. He has gone through a lot of things. And to also, in today's times, the sheriffs throughout the state of Kansas, some of them, and I probably will be a majority of them, are now turning to people like Ben to come in to help with their budget because every county is getting tight on funds. We're trying to figure out ways, what we can do. So kudos for Ben for taking on this task and his responsibility. He's done an outstanding job for the sheriff's budget. And I would probably say for the commission or anybody else, or recommendations from you, maybe the, the commission needs to maybe step back and hire an outside firm to come in and actually look at everybody's budget, not mine, but everybody as whole or in general to find out where they can save money at. He doesn't have any direct involvement with this county whatsoever, no personal relationships in this county whatsoever. It's just Ben Hart and Ben Hart alone. So I think that could be something that the county and the committee can actually look at and possibly get passed or, or get that dialogue started and stuff like that, especially with the stuff that he's found within my budget.
Well, they've hired five Bens at a really low rate to do that.
Yeah, I heard your pace pretty good.
I want my kids at college, you know?
I ain't asked for a bottle of water this morning. They don't have bottles of water. But they're saving money, okay?
I, I will go to the convenience store and get you a bottle of water. And then I'll voucher it up and get ready for.
That's gonna be a ten dollar bottle of water.
You want anything else in that water?
As the day progresses, I might need something, okay?
Well, when the sheriff's out of the building, he'll be.
Send me a text message. I'll see what I can do.
There was one last thing that was, uh, a few weeks ago when we were discussing some other equipment here at the commission, that I was instructed that that didn't happen. And this pertains to every county employee, not just the sheriff's office. But you as a committee, if you would be willing to at least, at least listen and open-minded enough reference to a cost of living increase for these, for these employees, um, under the impression that that just doesn't happen here. And to me, that's, that's not beneficial to the employees. Because you know as well as I do, every year, every month, every day, costs of things increase. And to expect our employees to remain static with pay and not look at any kind of adjustments or increases for two or three years over time, I think is just unacceptable. I think county as a whole needs to look at their employees as that's their most valuable asset. And if you look at a co, a co-increase for them, it's dependence on what you can do to keep the employees. And just my two cents, that's how I felt coming from an administrative position. I think that's just something that should happen every year for, no matter what, what it will be. But it's something to show your appreciation that, that you're trying to fight against the inflation that we all fight every day.
No raise is a pay decrease, certainly.
And one of the things that I'll, and I'll say this and I'll be transparent and I'll be blunt about it. The one thing that's kind of is the, uh, the talk within my office, and I don't know about the other departments or other elected officials department, is the healthcare, okay? And I think you have that, part of your thing. Now I will say that the, uh, the deputies and my support staff, including the jailers who have, do an outstanding job, they all got pay raises. Yes, I do admit that. They are, they will deserve pay raises. Because would you like to go into a jail and deal with somebody that spits on you, fights with you and so on and so forth? Or the general public when going to a call for service and stuff? But the, but the discussion or the chatter within my office is that they're concerned about the insurance. Because if the insurance cost goes up that the employee has to pay, that pay raise that they receive, is that going to just be a wash? And we're back to the same situation again. So that is the main question or question chatterbox, however you want to put it, within my office. And if it's in my office, it's everywhere.
Sure.
The city just changed the laws.
So I just wanted to throw that out there while you're looking at the benefits. If you can do comparison to the increase to my office or any other office, I really would appreciate that.
Well, it's a good point. I mean, everyone, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, that happens with social security. The government tells us, I got a raise, but then they took more out for Medicare, so, okay.
We need to excuse you gentlemen because we've got a ten o'clock appointment and it's ten now, but thank you so much. Appreciate it. Luke, thanks for the information.
Yes, thank you.
Might be waiting outside there.
You know, that's really important is.
It is.
For my questions I'm going to have at some point is how many employees have one hundred percent? I mean, how many employees are just, they're always just got insurance?
Right.
Okay, because their spouse is over here somewhere else giving insurance. How many have to take a family, because their spouse does not work somewhere? I mean, that makes a big difference.
Right. That's why I think her, Micah's idea of creating that committee of employees that can give those options.
It's critical, critical that the employees be included.
Well, thanks for coming, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll just let you get started. I'm, I'm going to be the main interviewer here for your department, so, but I'll let you guys kick off. If you've got some paper for us, please pass that out and introduce yourselves, please.
My name is James Crebs. I'm the county attorney. This is Angel Wilson. She's my office manager. I think that we have. So I believe everybody should hopefully have the budget we submitted previously. I'll just pass those down. What we're passing down is a slightly revised version. It is essentially all the same. All it does is move my current part-time assistant county attorney, who is employed essentially based on contract from personnel to contract, which is I think where his payment has been coming out of anyway. Going through the main changes from our budget from last year. The appellate work section has increased a little bit. That is from the attorney general's office. That's who we contract our appellate work with. They've, because of our essentially caseload, that's where we fall. When we had previously contracted with them back in twenty twenty and a little bit before that, we had had a little bit of lower caseload, lower appellate caseload, which is where they based that initial number off of. So this is a closer number. And likely it's going to change probably every year, but this is probably pretty close to what it should be. I don't imagine it will change too, too much from year to year from that. The part-time assistant county attorney, we have reduced the request for the total on that one just based upon Justin's contract. We don't need additional funds. So that's been reduced a little bit. Special prosecutor attorney's fees, those have, I believe, remained the same, so have the dues. And most of our other contractual services are pretty close to what they were previous years. Same with the capital outlay. Office-wise commodities are pretty standard for most years as well as postage. When it comes to personnel, we are requesting an increase on our full-time assistant county attorney position. That is, we are currently full staffed. But looking through, as you may or may not be aware, rural Kansas is an essentially an attorney shortage. It's been fairly well documented that every county outside of predominantly Wyandotte, Johnson, Sedgwick, Shawnee are short of lawyers, and that shows down here as well.
Yes.
Looking through, just looking at jobs that are posted and not filled. Reno County is offering positions for eighty-nine thousand to one hundred and twenty-three thousand. Montgomery County is ninety thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. Crawford County has two open positions, one of which I know has been open for about a year and a half. They recently raised that, both of those positions to eighty thousand to ninety-five thousand salaries. Butler County is at seventy-three thousand to eighty-eight. Harvey County is eighty-five thousand to one fifteen. And I know Wyandotte County has been attempting to fill positions. I've heard they have made offers of up to one hundred and fifteen thousand. Additionally, we've got even in just criminal law, the public defender's offices opening up in Crawford County for the eleventh judicial district. They're hiring attorneys at seventy-two and a half thousand to ninety-six thousand and a deputy from eighty-five thousand up to one hundred and thirteen. So where we were at with that request for the assistant attorney position last year is just quite honestly not enough to remain competitive. They keep people, or in the event that we should lose people, to find new people. So that's, that's the basis for that, nonetheless.
Okay.
The legal assistant positions, I have requested a three percent standard raise for them. They do a lot of hard work and quite honestly, if I could pay them more, I would. And that is, I believe, most of those changes. Unless I missed anything.
I do need to correct that the legal secretary for Caden will eventually go to full-time. We've had that discussion with her. She was coming from college and so she just wanted to see if she was going to be able to balance through and work. But she, her plan is to go back and kind of get into criminal psychology. So she's kind of going to continue working in our office, but she is at full-time, so that.
So she's about twenty hours a week now, or?
She will be, yeah, after the summer.
She will be forty, or she is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, forty.
But what is she now?
Anywhere between twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty, okay.
Currently.
So is this number reflects twenty hours or forty?
That should reflect forty. That is, that is a listed as a full-time position, but right now it's filled part-time.
Okay, do you, do we have, we have two county attorneys. I'm looking at this. Full-time and assistant county, we have a full-time and then we have an assistant county attorney?
So we have two full-time attorneys in our office, myself and one assistant county attorney, and then one part-time assistant county attorney, who's Mr. Meeks.
And that's the contract on the first page, correct?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Never mind. Okay, we got three full-time secretaries, right? Plus Caden, or two full-time?
So we have, previous budgets have given us essentially three legal assistants plus an office manager for full-time. Which is, quite honestly, we already struggle a little bit with our workloads already. So we, we need the three, or the four, I suppose, yeah.
Tell me what longevity is under overtime.
So longevity, generally, I believe it's just included. Our, you can see from our staff, we, Ms. Wilson's been here with us for twenty-three years. Ms. Hood's been with us for sixteen years.
So is that like a bonus payment?
If after they've been with the county for ten years or more, then they get so much per year for each year that they've been addition in their wages.
I think the county used to do it, I think we're going to do it.
It's, I think it comes around in November.
The commission agreed to that a long time ago.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it. What was the assistant county attorney wage before?
I believe last year we had it listed at eighty thousand.
You're going to love Kate. She was my work-study for years and she is absolutely out. She's just like heaven.
I know her and the family, so, yeah.
She's wonderful. She's wonderful.
So James, how long have you been in the role you're in?
How long have I been in this world? I took over in August of last year.
Okay, all right. So you're not going to be able to answer this next question, most likely. So in twenty twenty-one, the actual number spent was three hundred and fifty-five thousand. The budget for this year was four hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is thirty-two percent increase. That's about eight percent per year. And I just wondered what the dynamics were of that, but I don't think you're going to be able to tell me. The big jump was between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and you might be able to speak to that one. It, it went up about seventy thousand dollars compared to the modest seventeen thousand, which you're. So what, what were the dynamics of that? What were the big movers there?
So in twenty twenty-four, or in the, from the, sorry, the twenty twenty-five budget, I did not present the budget, but I was aware of kind of its creation. That budget created an additional legal assistant position for us. And it's prior years, or I should say in twenty twenty-four, yes, the budget included one full-time county attorney and one full-time assistant. So it added that extra part-time assistant as well, mostly to deal with us having three judges.
So it's most, okay, gotcha, mostly personnel?
Yes.
All right.
So is the caseload jumped in those years?
Looking at our cases, it's, it's jumped a little bit. Twenty twenty-two total, there were seven hundred and fifty-one cases filed. Twenty twenty-three was about eleven hundred. Twenty twenty-four was about just shy of twelve hundred. Year-to-date, this year, we're at just shy of six hundred. So we're increasing. I will say our case, we have a bit of a charging backlog to get through as well. Before I came on board in January of last year, the prior county attorney was essentially alone for a good bit of time.
Right.
Which leads to backlog just because one person can only handle so many cases.
Right.
So we're working through that still.
Okay. So this is, we're about mid-year?
Yes.
How are, how are you doing on budget year-to-date compared to actual? Feeling pretty comfortable with that, or?
Yeah. So the last numbers that I'm looking at here were from March, end of March, and we're, we're pretty much on track.
Okay, okay.
And that's in this year, if you need to look at our budget for the rest of the year. That's why we moved the contract assistant county attorney to contract because this year it's going to look like we overspend in our personal when actually it's coming, they're pulling it from the triangle. And that's when I found that out this year, was that that's how he was being paid. It's just going to look slightly imbalanced.
And you all are participants in the employee benefits programs of the county and the capers and everything?
Yes.
May I ask, have any questions for James?
I don't.
Well, thanks for preparing and coming in for Shake Your Vibe very much.
I'm not old enough to have worked there for twenty-three years.
I thought the same thing.
And there's some years not counted for, so. Started in, actually in ninety-eight.
Really?
Yeah.
Everybody looks younger than me, so.
He's my classmate. Yeah.
Gosh, I didn't know you were that old.
I know this weekend, twenty-five years, I'm like, oh, that seems. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angel.
So five or ten minute recess to?
To get out of this cold room. I'm going to get my jacket.
And Carolyn, can you find a bottle of water?
Well, yeah, I tell you what, and this is just, I mean, my age is, Joe, Joe and I both probably thinking this. Okay, I mean, I can remember the day when we had Dan Meyer and his secretary, and that was it for the county attorney's office. I mean, I hate to be, I hate to be stick in the mud. But I tell you what, they'd have to prove to me that they needed three, two and a half people plus this other guy on retainers over. I can't believe that. I mean, I'm sorry, okay?
But just jump in.
I mean, I guess their case is from seven hundred to twelve hundred. I mean, that's almost a double.
Yeah.
Huge increase in caseload, but.
If you guys just control your kids, come on.
You live in a fatherless society. I know a person that probably transcribed all this stuff, they can't, they do it in their home and send it back. They probably. I made a log of this. Yeah, you're right out. Show guys where he is.
Who's doing that? Who's wearing glasses?
Oh, I don't know.
Really?
Yeah, as I get older, but.
They just threw me off. I don't blame you. I don't blame you. Know that Sam's badge came in today is mainly.
Oh, I've seen that.
And, and. I don't know if they get in there early because as soon as you guys have break.
I should have been where I wanted to be.
It's terrible without. I sit down, I sit down one night and started to put you up in the nest. That was the night that I realized that I.
That girl wakes her, I call her a teeter, and I'm like, hell.
Well, that's my deal. I have. This day, but this day, but this day, forty-four, forty-seven. And that's the stuff that will be, tell us, let's not talk about stuff like that. No, those are HPA tabs. You know, I actually thought about.
No, at all.
I thought about for the longest time, just. We had daytime meetings, like we used to. And walk through, and walk through, and walk back to her. Hopefully, they can pay their transition costs here. Now, no, they said, no.
That would be expensive, but probably. Did it beat you?
Third one had, that was like something that. It has, it has a big power. It's a bad.
Serious.
Well, yeah, small people. You go over to a more, I'll try and set them.
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess Kristen's not gonna do some work, right? They talked about it.
I haven't really been thinking about, I'm usually the last person to know. Like, when the person shows up is when I find out about it.
Which is, so you meant that.
Right.
That was, that was, you see, it's, it's.
No, that's, that is quite all right, I like hearing those. And I turned the air down a little bit in here, I heard you guys saying.
That's all crazy, so. I had breakfast this morning, but I just started in the car, because I thought, hey, come on, hold on a sec, Jack.
You never know, if it's cold, hot, or whatever.
Thank you. Is this your office in here?
This is my new office.
I've been up there.
Yes, they removed it here last Friday.
Well, I think that's, you gotta window.
I have a window, I have a wall for desk, wait, that was my problem, trying to figure out where am I going to put the list back in.
You've got a lot of responsibility, and you need advice as well, yeah, probably the same way, but I have to kind of, so. And sometimes I don't have.
That's actually what I want, like, we have a whole tax sale preparation right now. You know, a golden table.
That's right, yeah, and.
I can have everything laid out.
And it, and it makes it so much simpler, yes, yes.
I couldn't see my neighbor's house, I could see just the line. So a lot of people were in a, I guess.
The problem is you all have to be your own way, because of the.
Well, should be a lot of the.
What do you think, Brian?
I think it was too early this morning to get up.
This way.
Oh, yeah. What did happen? Yeah, no kidding.
Every single tree that fell the same direction, it would have made sense that they didn't.
Yeah, no kidding.
How's Carol?
I'm glad, how are you?
I'm gonna turn my ringer off, because Jimmy has a night ever calling.
How's the family, Brian?
Uh, everything going pretty good.
Good.
Got a couple little issues, but nothing that we're not gonna get through, so.
Well, I'll have challenges every so often, okay?
Okay.
Pass. Kevin, you get some water?
It's, so Matt, Matt.
If you go to Matt's office, they have a, Cole didn't.
I will.
Here, I'll hang, I'll come to you.
Don't bring.
I'll bring, yeah, here you go. Here you go, go, put one over there, you got. There you go, I printed plenty, just in case somebody else. And then, uh. Did, has people been, you know, she has those questions, have they been giving you those as well?
No, they just gonna answer.
Okay.
If you bet, that's fine.
And then I also went ahead and printed out, um, my bare minimums, the lump abilities that I had to do. That's good, well. Luckily, you know, when Will left, um, you know, he left. Luckily, Will left. Well, when he left, uh, on his computer, and about three months ago, I found this. And it was kind of addressed to whoever takes my spot, you know? Um, here's what you need to be doing. And so I was really glad to see that I was doing everything but one.
That's good.
So, and the one is kind of silly, it was the, uh, the weather, keeping track of every day's weather. Think I'd be more suited to keep track of when the weather's bad.
So Brian, you're obviously not Kansasan anymore, if you went to the basement when you saw a little storm come on.
Well, I had company, and I didn't want them to, and they're not from Kansas.
Okay.
And I didn't want them to be.
Why are we, why are we going outside to watch the storm?
When in Missouri do this, the Missouri's doing?
I didn't want them to feel uncomfortable or whatever, and I thought, you know, because I have a pool, like, my basement's finished. And so we just went down and turned that television on instead of this one, you know, the main, so, you know.
So Brian, do you know Joe, Joe's?
I do not.
Joe, this is Joe Smith, he's gonna be the main interviewer for your area.
Sure, sure, sure. And, um, I, I just wanna give you guys some background on me. Um, this is my first time doing a budget, last year, my budget was handed to me, um, by the commission. And so this year, I've sat down and I went through line item of my expenses that I had had in twenty-four. I'll be honest with you, I don't know that I'll be able to stay under budget and do the things that I have to do for twenty-five. So.
Current year, you mean?
For the, the current year we're in.
Right now, you're running.
And so I'm probably gonna have to make some hard decisions, and I'm gonna have to work with my regional, uh, KMA threat to see what exactly maybe I cannot do that I normally do, like the convention, or you know, whatever. Because I still have one more class to take, to be fully licensed. I mean, I can call myself licensed with the classes that I have, but there's one more, I have to spend three days at the Kansas Emergency Operations Center at the next, I think. So, anyway. It's, I mean.
So you're expecting to exceed your two thousand and twenty-five budget this year?
It could happen, I'm gonna try to not, I'm gonna do everything I can.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, the, the problem that I have is, is being licensed, I have to have continuing education.
Yeah.
And so continuing education falls under the conferences that they have. And I've only went, there's two conferences every year, and I've only went to one, but I wasn't licensed.
At the time.
At the time, and now I am. And the conferences are in September and December. And, uh, and I was like, well, I just won't go to the conferences. Well, I got to, one of the things that I've done through this is I sat down and I went through, and that's what, where I got the, uh, in the handout here, the adjective general is who I report to. Or fallen, or I don't say report to, it's only talked in once a year. But this is the standards that I have to maintain. And one of the things that I had done to save money for the county was I turned Will's phone off. I thought, there's no sense in me carrying two phones, that's stupid. Well, I found out yesterday, no, it's not stupid, it's mandated by law. And I'm like, oh, okay, um, so yesterday, I had Jimmy order me a phone that would be emergency management only. You know, because the miss says I have to have it twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that I don't do that previous emergency managers did, is I don't drive my vehicle unless I'm going to town. I mean, I just, I don't, I mean, they, the previous ones, they drove it home every day. In fact, Will, God bless him, he, he drove to work, back for lunch, back to work, back home, every day. And I don't, number one, I live in, I just live on the other side of the line, I live in the circle. I don't think it'd be right for me to take a Bourbon County car to my house every day, that's just, now.
You might get it vandalized.
No, not my neighbor, they're pretty nice, I mean, my next door neighbor's a great KU fan, so.
Oh, Lord, okay, well, that's, that's too bad.
The only time I do drive it home is when I have to go to Neodache or Howard the next morning. Because it's a shorter trip for me to drive down the highway to go through Bernal and down through Pittsburgh to get there than it is for me to come here and then drive there.
Yeah.
How often do you have to leave town?
Once a month.
Once a month?
And then for the conferences. Like I said, I, and then sometimes I'll host our monthly one, so I don't have to drive for it. But I drive the car because I, I have a projector screen and ball of light, and you know, and all the stuff, you know, I always get known as, you know, when we're hosting.
So that car's dedicated to you?
Yes, yeah, and I'll be honest with you, I spent a lot of money on that car at maintenance. I probably have the oldest vehicle in the emergency management fleet. And it's weird that an emergency manager would drive a car. Most of them drive trucks.
None of them drive.
Full-wheel-drive trucks.
Full-wheel-drive.
Right, and, uh, and that, that thing, the transmission has been giving me problems, I had to put an entirely new, um, ABS system in it last year, which really, if, if, if something like that happened this year, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be sunk. So, anyway, um, that's, that's, that's a fish to fry another day, I mean, they, I was promised a new vehicle last year. And then, of course, and I say new vehicle, new to me, there'd be a new vehicle by any means. But, anyway, and that's not something that I'm putting in my budget at all. So that's just something that if they decide they want to do for me, great. Until that thing dies, I guess, I mean, I just hope it doesn't die in Neodache. That's a long trip.
Okay, it is a county vehicle.
It's a county vehicle.
And you pay outside maintenance?
No, the county does the maintenance for me, I pay for the parts, I pay for the parts.
You pay for the parts out of this?
Out of my budget.
Out of your budget, okay.
Yep, I, when I do an oil change, I pay for the oil in built.
Sure.
You know, I had to go get windshield wiper, uh, fluid the other day.
What is the crawl can bill for?
The crawl can bill is, um, for cable for us, because if there's ever an emergency, I have, I, you know, I might have to have CNN app, Weather Channel, things like that.
Sure.
So that's what the crawl can bill is.
It's a dedicated line?
It's, actually, I, I let, since dispatch is next door, I let them use it.
Use it?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't cost anymore.
Okay, so it's, it's not satellite?
The EOC, no.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's essentially cable. And like when we had the, the threat of the big storms, it turned out to be pretty good storms, that, you know, we had the flooding and stuff. You know, I sat in there and I had cable up over here with the Weather Channel on, and I had a computer dedicated to the National Weather Service out of Springfield. And then I've got another computer over here that we have up for whatever, I mean, I can do a Zoom meeting at this, you know, I can be talking to Brad or whatever, you know, if I need to. I, luckily, we've never had to open the EOC because of a disaster, we've just been able to handle it out of, out of our cars.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Does that include internet and TV both, this, this goes three?
No, our internet comes through, my internet goes through IT's budget. So this is just.
This is just for the TV?
Mm-hmm, it's expensive.
Two hundred seventy-five dollars a month, wow.
Yeah.
I can't even believe it's that much.
God, I don't have cable.
I believe it that much.
Yeah.
I have streaming.
What I did was I just went through line item, what came out of my budget in twenty-four.
So, Brian, could you, could you go to a streaming service instead of a hard cable?
I don't know, because if we were to have problems like if the cell towers went down, then I'm, then I lose that. So if something came through.
Yeah.
See, if something came through and took out the cell towers.
Yeah, that's what happens to me all the time.
Then I would be, I mean, for me, and I'll be honest with you, I, i- if I could cut something, you know, I mean, I would. But the problem that you have is, is when you start cutting emergency services, that's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, because it's like, okay, you know, like in, in the deal that I put out there, you know, that, that they asked us that, those questions, you know, pretty much my entire budget is managed, everything that I'm paying for, I mean, I mean, I could, I guess I could wash the car out in the parking lot, you know, if I just buy tokens.
Let's, let's explore this a, just a little bit more.
Sure.
Because crawl can is hard cable to hear.
Mm-hmm.
For internet service.
Yeah.
So that would be the Wi-Fi service here, is, is crawl can. It's cabled, so it's, the, the Wi-Fi is not gonna go out if cell towers go down. So streaming service works off Wi-Fi, and so.
I guess it's something we could look into.
I, I think that's something you, you really need to look into, to see if we can do, do streaming instead of cable.
Sure, oh, and I, and I don't know exactly, I mean, this is just what I took over.
Sure.
And so.
Sure.
I, I, and that may be for this, I don't know, that may be.
What decision went into that?
I don't know, I don't know.
It's expensive, because they have that cable service that they provide, and it's additional to whatever, I mean, it's pretty expensive.
But if he can get Wi-Fi in his office, he can, he can get, um, YouTube TV for eighty dollars a month.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I do just. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, like I said, I, I, and that's something I'd probably have to talk with Shane.
Yeah.
And see, you know, because.
Yeah, if you'll make a note to do that, that'd be great.
You ought to be sure that you've got access, I mean, we don't want you to talk that.
No, no, I.
No, I get it.
It's gotta be just as good, but it, it's, if, both of them are cabled, so I just don't see an advantage to.
I wonder if there's extra things on that cable, not just your office, and that's why the bill's higher, like if other, and you're just getting billed for the whole thing.
It could be, it could be that I'm paying for the whole building, I mean, it could be, I, you know, come to think of it, I think there's actually a, uh, I think there's a television in the, in the weight room, you can tell I hit it a lot.
You know, I think that, I, you know, well, I think you need to check that, because I was gonna say, I looked into getting that a ca, the television cable for the crawl can, and I decided it's too expensive, but I just tried it, okay, but it wasn't gonna be that much, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and it, I don't know.
I'm sure they charge more for commercial.
That's it.
Yeah.
It's probably a commercial thing, I don't know, but I could check into that.
If you can do Wi-Fi.
Yeah. And then, uh, copier, that's just me printing now. Next year, I'm gonna have to print a whole lot, but, um, I'm gonna try to see if I can get people digital copies, because we do these. Next year, I have to redo them, is my deadline for the emergency operations plan to be completely redone. And so I've got until the end of twenty-six, and then it has to be reviewed by the state and approved, and then I have to print a copy for pretty much every entity. What I'm gonna try to do is see if I can't put it on a thumb drive and say, here, here it is, that way, save paper, because.
Where do you get your paper from? I'm just thinking off from the treasures.
Um, to be honest, I, um, I just order it when I need it, um, usually Amazon, but right, I probably won't need paper.
Yeah.
Will liked his office supplies.
Yeah, so good enough.
Really, you know, I don't think I'll ever have to order a, uh,
Yeah.
Those yellow tad, pads, you know, I'm talking about.
Legal pads.
Legal pads, I'll never have to, ever. Paper clips, staples, um, I've got a lot of time supply back there, so.
Could be a case of what you're talking about earlier, spend the budget before the budget years over, yeah?
Well, Will was one that, if there was, if there was a, a grant for something, I mean, he, you know, I could take you out and show you the PPE that we have from COVID.
There was a box of math masks out there forever.
Yeah, and I finally just, we've got a, we've got a warehouse over here. The Heartland, the reason I have electric bills is, um, I pay for the electric at the towers, because the repeaters come out of emergency management.
Okay.
So the radio towers, and there's one out here on Old Fifty-four out there, you know, I'm talking about a great big one. And then we have another tower over on, just over by the state line, so I pay the electricity on those two. I had their, add Verizon in, you'll notice it kind of looks a little different because of the phone requirement, I didn't have, I added that in yesterday.
So you, so you have both Heartland and Evergy.
Because of where they are.
Two separate, okay.
The tower out there takes Heartland electricity, and the tower over there is Evergy. The propane is for the, uh, I rent the tank for the generator at the, the tower out there. Because the tower out there is the LEPC, which is.
So also Heartland, yeah.
Mm-hmm. My license and conference fees, that's, and that's probably on the low end, I don't, you know. And then the travel costs, that's me driving too, and the hotel stays, because the conferences are a week long. And, uh, they used to be Wichita, which was not bad, now they're in Manhattan, which is just that much further. And then the other one's in Brands, and it's for state.
So Adobe's a software license?
Mm-hmm, that's my year of software license, and I use it a lot.
Yeah, I imagine, so I, I'm just surprised that the county doesn't have a.
Yeah.
Countywide.
Countywide Adobe license.
We do, we split it up.
Okay.
Okay.
So I pay for mine.
Well, speaking like that, so like.
Actually, I think Laura actually takes care of the whole thing, and then it comes out of line into hers, or, it's, it's one thing.
So our cell phones done like that too, or do each of you have your own cellphone plan? Is there like one county, and they just divvied it up?
Yeah, yeah. It, each line costs X amount of dollars a month. Actually, I put in the four-twenty, because Jimmy said it was forty dollars a month, but it was gonna drop to thirty-five. Well, if it's gonna drop to thirty-five, I'm gonna budget for thirty-five, you know, I'm gonna budget as low as I can.
Four-twenty, I thought it was your marijuana budget.
Yeah, well. Yeah, well, you know, I do live in Missouri. And every time I go to Walmart, I drive right by that, that little store and.
Oh wait, are we on the air?
Yeah.
You're gonna make, make Facebook great.
I'll stop, I'll stop.
Okay.
Office supplies, I keep that pretty low, just because, you know, I might need, I don't know, and I've never had business cards made. I didn't see the point in having business cards made until I was licensed. And so that's something I'm, I may wait until twenty-six to do, just because that's one less thing I'll spend in twenty-five, so I'm trying. Um, batteries for equipment, that's just my battery backups. Um, they seem to go bad. One of them seems to go bad every year, and I buy batteries. I don't buy natural backups. I just buy batteries and replace the batteries. And utilize the, what I, the equipment I have. Fuel, I kept that really low, because I don't, I don't drive it once I have to. Now, I, one other thing I do drive before, if we have, like the storm that came through.
Drive it.
And I'll go out and help Eric do storm damage assessments and things like that, and so I'll go out and just drive the roads and, hey, there's a washout here or whatever. Um, vehicle repairs, last year it was thirty-five hundred. I'm hoping that nothing bad goes wrong. And that was just parts, because they had to order an ABS system, which was, and they ordered it from, from a salvage yard. I'd hate to thank them for that order. Then I had to have, the ABS had to be reprogrammed through, and it has to go to the dealership to do that.
Yeah.
So that was fun. Or I could have just dealt with the flashing lights everywhere I went, and that's, that's, that, that, that gives me a little anxiety. I'm like, okay, I'm on my way to Manhattan and the light's on. Um, toners, that's what I spent last year on toners, and so I figured it'd probably remain the same. From my, my printer that's, the copier is an actual copier. And then the printer, I use it at my desk, because, you know, small things like this stuff, cause it saves money. And then car washes, that, that was the minimum for to get the little tokens. And I've washed that car twice in the two years that I, cause I don't drive gravel very often.
Careful, the dirt might be holding it together.
Boy, you should have seen it, I mean, cause Will lived on gravel, and so the first time I washed it, it hit the floor.
Oh wow.
Welcome to my life.
The LEPC and KEMA hosting and, and exercises, um, LEPC, we have once a quarter. Uh, and what we do there is all of your, you know, public health, sheriff, police, city manager, EMS. Some of the nursing homes, the hospital will be involved when they get here. And once a quarter, we need a pop-a-dons, I might need to, that way they'll come. Cause that really helps. And then uh we do our business there, and then the fourth quarter meeting is when I do my planning meeting. That's where they sit down and say, okay, here's the exercises we'd like to do for the next year. And I'm required to keep three years' worth of exercises out there. Do we do the exercises we planned for? Usually not. I mean, we were gonna do a full-scale active shooter at the college this summer. We got a new president at the college who says, no, you're not. So now I have to, I have to pivot, because I'm required to do two exercises a year. Well, we always do a regional one. This year, I'm gonna be involved in the regional one, which will save us a ton, because it's being done in Shenee. So I don't have to pay for anything on that one. And then the other one, I'm working with uh Chris Witteran Village on an exercise out there that'll involve public health and police, which will. Suit my guidelines that I have to do. So uh Will's budget, when he used to do the budget for, for exercises was like two thousand dollars. But Will liked to do exercises that involved like shutting down the airport for a day, you know, I mean. I try to do mine in a setting like this. I mean, I'd like to do more full scales, but they cost money. And our first responders are rock stars anyway, so I, I, I don't worry about it. We, we, you know, we have the best. The other thing I wanted to throw out there is, I, when I talk about the EMPG grant. That's the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant that comes through. Well, FEMA gives it to the state, and the state gives it to the counties. Not all counties participate in that. If you don't participate in it, number one, you can't get the grant. But number two, it hurts you with other things, as far as, you know, FEMA's cooperation and things like that. The only good side to that would be, if you don't participate, well, you don't have to do exercises, because the exercises are mandated for the grant. But last year, my grant was twenty-two thousand one ninety-six. So that would easily cover my, all of my contractual, all of my commodities and part of my salary.
So the grant's yearly?
The grant's yearly.
And you know, you know what, I just guarantee you.
Year before it was sixteen, but if I, if I do the things I'm supposed to do, and then fill out the grant paperwork, which takes three months. I start in September. That's, the day I get it's always in September, and I've usually got approval around Thanksgiving.
And where's that money allocated to?
It goes to the general fund, and then they take, and then they.
So your grant money goes to general fund?
My grant money goes straight to the general fund.
So part of your budget reflects an eighteen, whatever, thousand dollar grant that you're getting.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two.
It was sixteen, it was sixteen and change in twenty-three. In twenty-four, it was twenty-two thousand one ninety-six. I just looked it up. They did tell us that they think that it'll probably get cut about ten percent. But when the money comes in, it's, it goes out to the counties based on county population. So let's say, you know, a county drops out. For, for example, Greenwood County does not. They don't do it, neither does Chautauqua. Chautauqua, it probably wouldn't even be worth their time, because they're, they're, if I remember right, the girl in Howard said she got like. It was under ten thousand. It was, and I was like, is it really worth your time? You know, three months' time, fill out that grant paperwork? And then, and she's kind of like me, she goes, every dollar counts. So, but let's say a county drops out, well, that pool gets bigger for us, and I think that may be what happened with this twenty-two. Some counties just didn't do their grant.
So it comes from the state?
Yes, it comes from the Kansas Emergency Management Association, from KEMA. And uh they, like I said, they get a chunk from the federal government, and then they duty that out to us based on population. So, you know, for like Crawford County, I hit the bank with that. But twenty-two thousand, that's a good, that's a good.
Third of your budget.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's the one beauty of mine is, is I think I'm the only, I have the, like, the smallest budget in the county. But I'm also, you know, I, I bring in, I bring a grant to the table that pays for a lot of my budgets, so, you know. So my thought is, is going up, you know, seventeen hundred dollars, sixteen change. Concerning the things that I have to do. I hate the fact that I have, that I have to grow up, that these are all things that. I, I didn't know that I had to go to both camps. I had no idea.
Understandable, though.
So.
So we have eight minutes left. Joe, did you wanna lead, lead us on any question?
Okay, uh, it's pretty well answered, the.
Okay.
The commission's questions on this sheet that he given out there.
I.
Is there, is it, but the question always remains, is there anything else? That we need to cover as far as the budget goes, because you said that you think it's gonna go up. Is this a capital outlay that's gonna happen?
I did not have, I didn't budget for capital outlay this year. Because I don't anticipate needing anything. My computer's fine, my printer's new. Um, I mean, if I have a capital outlay and something bad happens, um, I, I, I think that IT would probably be able to help me out with that.
Okay.
So I didn't have any capital outlay this year.
Okay.
I budgeted for, or they budgeted for me in twenty-five, which it might help me cover some of the other stuff that. Might, you know, like the contractual, if I, if I come short. But I'm gonna sit down with Susan as soon as this is all settled down, cause she's so busy. But I'm gonna sit down with her and figure out exactly where I'm at right now, what I got left for twenty-five. And then I'll sit down and go, okay, this is what I gotta pay, let's figure it out. And if there's something that, you know, if I, if I have to miss the, the conference this year, so be it. You know, the kid, the kid from Crawford County, he had something come up last year and he couldn't do it, and the guy from Wilson County, we got out there and he got COVID. And had to come home. So it's not unheard of to not get into the conferences. Won't be the end of the world.
Okay. Well, I know Susan can help you out, because she's done a report checking generators.
Sure, sure, and that's what happened last year. We sat down and uh, last year, my budget was a lot higher. As far as, because ten thousand, you see, my budget didn't always include my full pay. Because I was part IT and part emergency manager, cause I wasn't licensed. And so in order to get me that better pay, I did work for Shane. And that's not to say I'm not gonna help them. I still, I helped, I helped them yesterday. I mean, I helped many guys, they needed help. But, and that goes for every department. I mean, I move file cabinets, I, you know, we do what we need to do here. But I was getting ten thousand out of, out of IT's budget. Well, now my whole salary comes out of mine. And so it makes it look like it's really inflated, whi- which it's not.
Salary's been steady, just.
The salary's steady, it's just now it's all coming out of emergency management instead of coming out of part of IT. Right. So, and then I went through these, you know, um, everything that I've got on here are things that I have to. I'll look into the Crock Hand Bill, that's a really good point. Um, but if I cut anything, other than maybe that, I probably wouldn't be able to get the grant. And not getting the grant in, for my department would be catastrophic.
I can see that.
You know, and, you know.
Well, I'm not sure you should miss a conference. If you run out of money, I'm not sure you shouldn't go to Susan and say, I'm gonna overstream my budget.
Well, and that's the thing, but I just wanna get it out there, that's why I wanted to say that.
Learn a lot of things at those conferences.
The networking.
Well, that's what I mean, it's the fact you find out there's new grants or there's someone new coming out.
Right. Well, I'll tell you the thing, last year, last year I went out there and they taught us how to use AI.
Yep.
And I'm telling you right now, it has made my job so much more streamlined. I can sit down and write an exercise. It used to take me a, a month to write an exercise. I can write one in a day.
Yep.
And it, it, it just really helps, um, so, but, you know, I don't know about, you know. That line items have grown. I mean, I'm sure there's been, you know, that, some of these expenses are gonna be more, like they keep raising rates and things like that, so. I'm just, you know, and also the other thing I'm looking into is the code red. That's our alarms, our warning system. We split that with the city, so that number's actually got. And I'm actually look, I've been in contact with a company um that some of the other counties are serving to use. It's much less, and it does more. So, but we're under contract through this year, so I had to have code red. That's why I had to put them in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but hopefully, I might be able to cut that in half.
Good.
So, and it does so much more, so.
Well, we appreciate the work that you're doing.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I appreciate it. I mean, a lot of people just don't understand what I did.
Yeah.
And I, I tell them, it's the worst named department in the world. You don't manage emergencies. You prepare for them. It should be called Emergency Preparedness. That's.
I agree.
You know, if, if, if I had, if I could change one thing, that'd be it.
That's what I put on here.
Cause when I show up, you know, after something's happened, I always hear the same line, oh, it's about time. I literally had a business call me during a storm. It was, I had been in emergency, I had been in my job three weeks. We had a big storm power outage. And I had a business downtown calling up, when's the park gonna be back on? I've got people in here that are trying to pay for their meals. And uh my credit card issue won't work, so what am I supposed to do? That's not an emergency.
It is the best.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Work on this.
Appreciate it.
I'd say my door's always open, but I gotta come get you. So you wanna come talk to me, cause I'm not on the other side of dispatch, so I go through a secure area. So my door is open, but I gotta come get you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hey, Terri Snixon, she's here, and here's your leader.
I think it just shows some people care, you know.
Right. How do you determine that in a person that's hard to?
Yes.
You guys ready? Not sure we are, but you. We're hoping you, hoping you brought refreshments.
What you need is a blanket and a heater.
She was hoping for one.
I have a heater in my office station, cause I was listening before, and I'm like, I'm gonna grab me some water and.
Well, I'm gonna go here if I have one, I'm gonna need me a bottle of water.
I was looking for something stronger, but okay.
Okay.
Terri, do you know everybody around the table?
Yes and no.
Josh and Katie and Joe and Greg and Karen.
I had a wonderful conversation with this lady. She knows exactly what she's done, people. Okay.
She's completely in the tank for you.
And that plus is what I give it out, okay? I don't know what she, how she does, all she does is what she's got.
Floor's yours, Terri.
Oh mercy. Well, I, I went ahead and answered all the questions that you guys sent out. Um.
Those are from the commission.
From, is this from the commissioner from you?
Those are from the commission, so we appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Um, the next page is our budget. We operate on a pretty, pretty strict budget. Our biggest increase is gonna be wages, unfortunately. I am down one parent, one full-time paramedic, so the overtime is, I mean, we're, our overtime is based after forty hours. And we work twenty-four hour shifts, so they work at least forty-eight a week. Some of them work way more. So that's where we're asking for an increase at, is basically in wages.
You know, I told Terri when we were visiting, I don't know how she can even estimate what she's gonna need. Because how many ambulance calls are you gonna have? How many tragedies are we gonna have? How many storms are we, whatever? There's no way. I mean, she's gotta have some flexibility. I'm sure she, if it's on that, if something goes wrong. But there's just no way to know how much they need.
What's, what's concerning in her area?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, and, and this year, we took a different approach when we did our budget, and she had to do this anyway for reporting that she has to do to Medicaid, I think.
Medicare.
Medicare. She has to break it down by all those different categories that we've got listed on the budget sheet over to the left. You can see the prior two years, there's not the detail that we have in the final column. Um, but what's, what's the biggest issue with her is, is we, we really have a target that we have to hit for user fees. And if we don't hit that target, then um, and, and that is people just paying their ambulance bill. If they don't pay their ambulance bill, then we don't have the resources to function for her job, um, in her department. And so the general fund's the only place to go to pick up when there's a shortfall here. And it's very hard. Um, we used to get about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but the last few years. If you'll turn to this, this page right here. Um, there's one section that says EMS services. That will tell you what we've brought in annually since two thou- from, since twenty twenty. And I hand this out every, every month to the commission, just so that they can stay on top of where we are financially. Um, but the EMS services, you know, is running anywhere from, like, if you look in twenty-one, we only got seven hundred thousand dollars.
And two thousand twenty was our first full year here at the county.
So these are, other than tax revenues?
Yes, this is services. This is just services. Um, this does not include tax revenues. Because we came over, what, the middle of nineteen?
Yes.
So two thousand twenty would have been the first full year to.
Yeah, of, of the county having, it used to be Mercy before two thousand twenty. And so um, you can see most years, we're, we're about eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. But what, what you don't see on this report is there's about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in outstanding receivables. And the way that we uh hire a company, Omni, and Omni is the group that does all of our billing for us. And they send two notices as part of their agreement to the. And they send two notices as part of their agreement to the customer. And then after that, they write it off. So, we took it a step further last year. Just last year, we started doing this. Um, because we had to get permission from the commission. And Terri sends out notices afterwards. She sends out two or three notices just to show good effort to try and set up some kind of a payment plan. I mean, you don't have to.
I have had, I have had some come back. They contact Omni and then Christine is my contact at Omni. And she'll, she'll either email me or call me, hey, so-and-so called. They wanna set up a payment plan. And I, you know, I said, okay, is this auto, are, was that, are they setting up automatic? Some of them do. They'll just set up automatic withdrawals, which is great.
Because we're getting something to try and get that receivable number down. Yeah. Um, we also are working on, it's taken us a little bit of time because we wanted to get this established first before we're sending some extra notices. And then, at the point where we feel like we've exhausted all opportunities, we will send them to the state set-off program. And what that is, is that if somebody gets a tax return, then we can, they'll take that, those dollars and pay to us.
I literally just got permission, what, the middle of last year?
Yeah. So, we don't have that all set up yet.
But you've never done that before, the, the set-off plan?
No, it had never been done before. So, I think that will help us maybe hit some of these targets. Um, I'm generally pretty conservative when I do revenues, but you can see it's nine hundred thousand dollars. We haven't hit that number. So, we're hoping, um, Terri and I visit often about her budget just to make sure that we're staying in line. When we get down to the last three months, we really talk about, okay, do you have everything you need to get through the end of the year? Because we're getting really tight. So, we stay on top of her stuff. Um, but where she gets in trouble, and this is in any, any of the departments that have built-in overtime. And when I say that, that's how their schedules run. Um, the problem becomes they can't take vacation. And when they do take vacation, you're inflating your overtime because there's nobody to cover. So, it's a, it's a vicious circle in, in her department. Um, to, and these people are gonna get burnt out. I mean, ninety-six hours in a, that's a lot of, lot of hours.
Some that work other counties that come in also. They might work Lundy County, Nevada, they'll come in.
But not very many.
No, I have, I have one that comes from Lundy County. And I mean, I do, when I do my schedule, I do it six weeks at a time. So, and I do it, I start my schedule at the three-week mark. Within that six weeks, three weeks in, I send out a message to all my part-time people. These are the dates for the next schedule. Give me your availability. Some, some do, some, I don't have any. It's like, Carolyn and I were talking yesterday, you know, I've got two paramedics that are on my part-time list that haven't given me any time. And I don't know. I couldn't tell you when.
And something that you need, I, I don't know, do you guys know our policy on us vacation? It's a use it or lose it policy. You get it for the year. And if you don't use it, then you lose it.
Do they have the schedule? How, I mean, do you make them schedule so far out of vans? They have to give you like a three-week notice.
Vacation? No, we have um requested time off sheets. They just, they know, you know. What, when they're, like, some of them, if they've got scheduled vacation like months ahead, yeah, they'll give it to me and I'll stick it in my folder. And when I get to that schedule, okay, I know that, you know, X number of people are gonna be gone this time. And I, I've had, I mean, very rarely have I had to do it, but I've had some that, you know, I might have two or three that went off at the same time. And I, I, my policy is whoever turned in the sheet first.
You know what it would happen if you had, if you increased your staff? Because see, I don't think it would cost a dime. If you had three more people because of these three over here that's working.
That would be amazing. There's nobody.
They just don't apply.
They don't apply.
I was gonna say, maybe they, maybe we should run some type of campaign.
We do. It's on our website all the time.
Yeah. We just don't, they're just not. If you look, I mean, I'm fortunate with the staff that I have.
Yes.
Because if you look at the surrounding counties, I mean, they're all struggling too. They're, it's.
And I, I mean, I know they are, you know, and I don't think it's anybody's fault. But that was one thing I thought. And I, I looked at her employees and her numbers and stuff. She had three, anywhere from three to five more people. And all costs is the same with dying because it's gonna cut down all this. Because you've got some people that are practically working twenty-four, seven. Two weeks. I mean, I don't know when they're sleeping. Okay, you know, I mean, yeah.
So.
Just one thing on the user fees. That's billed or is that collected?
User fees is what we collect, what we collect for.
Yeah.
Payments.
So, really that number should be a little bit less.
Yeah.
But um Terri, one thing I will give kudos to Terri is she goes out and she finds grants. I mean, if you'll look at the last, in twenty twenty-four, she had twenty-seven thousand dollars in state grants and sixty-eight thousand in local grants. So, she really went out and pushed.
Yes.
And so, you know, her expenses were probably a little elevated in twenty twenty-four, but that's because she had grants. Um, she's probably one of the departments that really looks for ways to, to get the equipment they need.
The goal is to do it again this year too.
Well, Terri, tell them where you, that grant, the sixty-seven thousand dollar, that's all local money. Tell them what you used it for.
So, last year, what we used our grant money for, we had gotten a new-to-us ambulance. It was a trade-in that Crawford County had used with Osage to get their new truck. Osage contacted us and said, hey, this truck has little nails on it. It's been re, hadn't it been rebuilt?
Mm-hmm.
Or remounted. It was remounted. That was the word I was looking for. It was remounted. Fifty thousand dollars. You can't buy a good ambulance for fifty thousand dollars. Because a brand-new one's three fifty right now. And so, I brought it to the commission. Well, it was no-brainer. We got it. Well, it didn't come with a power load cot. Well, our brand-new truck came with a power load cot. Amazing. So, I went out, got a quote for a power load cot. I think it was, well, it was sixty-eight thousand is what it was. And so, I task some of the entities here in town, Peerless, Labconico, Nice, Med Continental. Timken didn't have anything. I did talk to them, but they didn't have anything. They'd already depleted theirs. And those, those entities, I was able to collect two thousand dollars, a little over two thousand dollars, I think. And then, I went through the Patterson Foundation and got a grant from them. And Walmart wasn't, and the, um.
Was kinda.
Yes. So, I was able to get all of that and it didn't cost us anything.
Just happened to be another chairman.
Well, I see. I just think that was such an initiative. That's what she got it on her part. And it didn't cost her any money. And we got a new ambulance. And they, we had her price on her new ambulance. I asked her about long-range plan. It was like, you have fifty, four hundred thousand dollars. And it takes three years. You gotta order it again, et cetera. Okay. And they got, you know, the fifty thousand they paid plus this upgrade. Winner, winner.
Which Carolyn, you know this. What creates a problem for us is like for the ambulance. She really needs to, to get on the books to order another ambulance. But in um Kansas, in our financial law, we would have to actually get a loan today because we have to book it today and not have it for three years. So, you're paying on a loan for something you don't even have. And there's no way around that. Um, we've, I've talked to the state. I've talked to auditors. There's just no way around that. So, you would have to do a lease purchase today and not receive your equipment for three years.
You gotta have the money before.
Yes. Yes. So, because, and we definitely don't have money any, setting anywhere else that we could say, okay, this is what we're securing for that. But, so we don't really.
That's why the long-range plan is so important.
Yes.
To get it kind of started.
You almost need that sitting in there in advance. It could always be that.
Yes.
Yeah. And we used to, it used to be that we could, it's just to keep employees, we've had to raise the wages a little bit. I mean, used to, her EMTs were making thirteen dollars an hour. And they at least got that up to fifteen dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, to, we used to have a little bit of extra money that we could set aside and let that build up. We don't have that anymore. Um, it's just not available. Um, historically, if you'll look at that next page, this one, and I'm helping her because I have the history behind this. I have, I have a little bit more on that. This top tells you like the revenue and expenditures, how they've come in since twenty nineteen. And again, we took them over in twenty nineteen. But if you'll look down at that bottom section where it's a lot smaller to read, we used to have to levy to pay Mercy to run ambulance in Bourbon County.
Yes.
And so that shows you, and you'd look clear back at twenty-ten, we were paying them two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And up until this year, we've kept under that number. We've kept under that two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Well, the cost of goods have continued to go up. So, in twenty nineteen, it was three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that we had given. But then you'll see that drop off in twenty twenty. Well, that, then you go up to this section up top and that tells you is, um, we levied, let's see, two hundred and eighty-six, two hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and forty-three, two hundred and sixty-nine, two hundred and three. So, you can see we were levying under that number in two thousand and ten. Um, however, like every other fund, we've used cash reserves to keep operating. And so, in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, your levied fund is gonna go up. I mean, that's just a given to be able to cover the costs of it. Um, hoping the efforts of, of doing the state set-off will help. Um, but to fund this, that's where we are. It'll go up about a half a mil.
Intersecting thought on reserves. You know, right now, we're, we're looking at deferred maintenance on the courthouse of seven figures. And other investments that we need to make to catch up, um, without reserves, we're not in a position to approach a bond issue, which kind of disturbs me. And so, we need to, as we're pondering this budget, we need to think about how we build, begin to build back reserves.
The one thing that um I would say was a frustration to me when we were doing the sales tax initiative last year. There is language in there for, that we will give money to Freeman. But I kept encouraging them to, you know, set it, set a value. Set a value at five or six hundred thousand that we'll give to Freeman every year. And then anything in excess of that that's obtained, let us use it for EMS. And I never could get anywhere with that. The language is only in there if, if Freeman were to not come. So, um, you know, that's something I think could help. Um, the deferred maintenance on the building, just for this group to understand, there is dollars available for that. We do have money for that. Um, that is in the jail bond sales tax. The language in the sales tax was, it, it allows for the courthouse to do repairs to the building and operations. So, and I would be more than happy to share that with you. So, I think that can get accomplished. We can get this building up to a good standard with those dollars, um, just by using those funds. Now, from a financial perspective, I'd like to pay the bonds down quicker. But there are needs and we need to address those.
Well, the billing itself, I mean, that's longer than anything is.
What's, what's the rate?
Double the price. I mean, it's, I bet you what, what I read, they said it was eighty dollars. I bet it's twenty-five percent more than that right now. At least, at least. It's been that much. It's been ten years. There's gotta be a lot more done with the water damage. Going freezing. I mean, we have some pretty tough winters.
Well, and from the, from the guys that are doing the building maintenance, the, the oversight of it, they're not allowed to go out and get bids. So, they may talk to a contractor and say, hey, can you give me a ballpark of what it would cost to do this tuck pointing or whatever? Because they, they, they have to have a commission approval to be able to go out for bid. So. What's the rate on the bond right now? Uh.
Oh, I can't answer that. Maybe I can.
Just curious.
Well, she's looking that up. These next three pages that are on here. This, the first page is a law that we operated under when we were Mercy. The second page is what we should be operating under now. And then our statute, that, we have a, we have to operate under a medical director, which is Dr. Zach Karmsec. And we pay him ten thousand dollars a year. To be the medical director.
Use his license or?
Yeah. It's a state law. You have to have a medical director.
Where is he?
Huh?
Where is he?
He's in Kansas City. He used to, when um Villa Christie was here.
Yeah.
And we had the ER, he was here.
I got you.
And um, he's agreed to stay on. And so, we, if we have anything, we call him, email him, text him. And he comes by um once a month and checks off everything that we need him to check off. Drugs, you know.
So, I might have been glazed over when you explained this, but um commodities, big, big changes from year to year. You've got eighty-seven for this year. It was a hundred and ninety last year. Talk, just talk about that dynamic. It was eighty-seven, eighty-six, twenty twenty-four, the budget one ninety. Now, it's about eighty-seven.
Um, so in her, I can tell you, in her, in her budget lines, um, she just worries about the bottom line. Doesn't necessarily, those are just numbers that we, this is, this is what she's gonna need to operate. If we were to go back and break that out, you would see that it would go up to a lot of these. It'd be pretty similar to what you have in twenty twenty-six. And if you'd like to see that, we can break it down for you. Because I think it's actually broken down in the budget document, like our actual financials. Because if you look at that bottom line, it's one point two-two-six. And she's asking for one point two-four-nine. And that's mostly in wages is her increase. Katie, to ans, Katie, to answer your question, um, when I first came in twenty twenty-one, we refunded the bonds. And we are at anywhere from, the highest is three point five percent. Everything else is below that, two percent, two point one-five. I don't wanna pay those off too early.
Don't pay them early.
Right? That's what I'm saying. So, we're, we're, we're in a good spot as far as the bonds. Um, the land, let's see, the landfill pays off in this year. And then, really, we just have the sewer, which is not ours. It's the city's. And so, really, our, our jail bond is anywhere from point two-five to two point one-five, depending on the.
And it goes out for a while. That's the only one that's got a long time.
And, and we're generating, I, I've always been very conservative in there. I just say we're gen, we generate about eight hundred thousand. We generate closer to a million. Sometimes a million, two, depends.
What is your cash reserve now?
Very good in that fund.
Like your overall cash reserve for the county that you can use?
Uh, four hu, five hundred thousand, six hundred for all funds?
That's not very good.
No, that's terrible. And our, and our, honestly, it's gonna affect our bonds.
Yeah, they, because they look at all of it. That's all, that's something that they take consideration.
Yeah.
Number one thing, number, the number one thing they look at.
I was gonna say, that's exactly right.
Yeah, we couldn't go out for a bond right now.
Well, you didn't need to be worthless.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, our bond rates are below the rate of inflation. So, hang on to them.
Yeah.
Anything else for Terri?
I don't know. I just.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do.
Fantastic.
I was looking at those overtime hours by employee. And I was like, wow, I can't believe they still have these guys. Right? What I mean?
Well, and you.
We need all the, the crew people for her. And, and some of the costs is a dime. And, and those people probably couldn't care less whether they got that much overtime. Old times, I, I don't care who you are. Old times, I, it should be a tough one. You gotta have your time off.
Yeah, Terri will laugh at me because when I worked at the city as the finance person over there, when I came back in two thousand and nineteen, I called them all in. And I said, this overtime, I said, we're gonna have massive burnout if we don't do something about it. And they're like, yeah, we're used to it. And I'm like. She's like, how? How? This is not okay.
She's like, when do you sleep?
Yeah.
I'm like, we just do.
This conversation's going on for a long time. Well, you're not driving. You're just sleeping in the passenger seat.
Well, I think, I mean, I think it's great that we're gonna have a hospital here, but it's also helped us not having one because we're not doing the long-distance transports.
Yeah. Yeah. So, funny story about the hospital. I, I'm on the Freeman board. And I told um the administrator that I've seen several people just blow through that four-way stop because the stop sign was completely covered with trees. And what, the, the building and maintenance guy from Joplin came out with tree cutter. And somebody from EMS come running out, what are you doing?
We were all standing, well, he just left it. We were all standing there watching. We didn't know.
We were all standing, well, he just left it. We were all standing there watching. We didn't know who the guy was. I was standing out there. He just comes up, he starts snipping limbs off and just leaves them laying there. And I'm like, who is this guy? So John goes up there, you, and he, the guy's just sitting in his car, like, John's like, I think he was afraid to get out.
He told me about it, but I, I've just, you know, I live on Jayhawk, so I come through there a lot and I've just seen people start blowing through that stop sign, so look at it. And then I saw the stop signs.
How they blow through it all the time.
There's one like down on Nineteenth Street, I called the city the other day, and the tree has come down over the, and it's where a school bus usually stops. You know what I'm saying, coming from the other direction. But man, they need to do something about that because that, somebody could blow through that. They aren't paying attention, I mean.
Yeah, he was like, I'll come back over and clean out my mess. John's like, no, we'll get it, we just didn't know who it was. Cause he got out and he took a picture, and then he started snipping the limbs, and then he takes another picture and I'm like, we're just all standing there going.
Probably documenting his time.
Who is this guy? If you guys are doing a formal report on departments, I think something that would help Terry, um, that has been an issue is there's a building that sits behind them that they store all of their stuff in, and they still have not got the deed on it. And we're paying all the utilities on it, um, and.
Legacy.
And that's a problem.
I mean, is legacy still here?
Well, I mean.
We don't know where they're.
So the agreement was to come back to the county.
When KRI.
But you guys are using it.
We've been using it.
So the only fear is if they ever come and say.
It was supposed to have been deeded back to us when everything was signed.
To them.
Right. When everything was signed, sealed and delivered.
But that's the only, everything, you're using it like it's yours, paying the things like it's yours, but the only fear is if they ever come back and say, hey, that's ours.
Well, yeah, and I mean, we were, like I said, we're still, we've been paying the utilities on it this whole time that, um, Legacy's owned the building.
But you guys are using it a hundred percent?
No.
No?
We only have half of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Who that was in the other house?
Unless they took it all out, I haven't been back there, okay. All the equipment that was torn out of the hospital, they've just.
Oh, that's where they stored the equipment?
That's where they put all that stuff there and sell.
Wow, okay. All right, so Legacy's not using it at all?
No.
Okay.
Well, for.
Still, get the, get, getting the paperwork done is important.
Came out of the hospital, so I would assume it's theirs. I don't know. Um, I don't know if that came with KRI's deal that they could have all that stuff. Um.
Was the equipment, the county was talking about selling or any of that?
No, it's not any of that. We got all that out.
Oh, we did?
Mm-hmm. So that stuff that's sitting there is either parts for KRI or it belongs to Legacy. There, we've not had clear direction on that.
Maybe get someone to invest that.
Yeah, that would help her.
I don't know who would do that.
Not me.
I nominate Joe.
I think we start with the county.
Somebody figures it out, somebody can let me know.
Yes, no.
We'll, we'll wait till, ask him, until after we approve his budget, so he can ask for a budget increase. Thank you, ladies, great work. Appreciate y'all.
No problem. Gosh, these children.
Hang in there, Terry.
I will, thank you.
Don't you sometimes think, why, why did I think kids were a good idea?
Have you noticed she almost pays for her budget?
Yeah, with the fees.
If they have the service, I mean, I, I had no idea. I had, I mean, it was just a real eye-waking experience. I need to go through the budget with her and her employees and et cetera, and see what she takes in and everything. And I thought, my goodness gracious.
I know it's medical, so it's tough to talk about, but it's been known around the county that they won't go after you if you don't pay your bill.
Yes.
And so that just, you know.
Sure.
And I know you hate to go after someone in the town, but, you know, it's.
But she is.
Paying for it.
And she does it such a professional way. And she showed me some of the letters that she writes to them, some of the stuff that she does. And I mean, they have their opportunity to set up a payment plan. And some people have insurance and they haven't given her the information so that they can fill out the forms to send them in.
Yeah.
Setoff program should.
You know, she's just a very, very capable person.
Kinda like if there's no, uh, downside to shoplifting, there's no cash bail and, you know. It's, if it's under this amount, it's nothing and you're gonna get shoplifting.
That was so stupid, I tell you what. It did some stupid things in this country since I was born.
I'm sure it started before that, don't care.
A lot of them are going to that set off program because the state set up program.
Yeah, that's true.
And there's, there's companies that buy those receivables too. They don't pay a lot.
Well, and she was telling, I don't know whether she told me or Susan told me, somebody told me, that always before, she's been to Kansas. But they're, they're trying to work out an agreement with the Internal Revenue Service where it would be also, if you're getting a federal refund back too. I mean, they haven't got that clarified yet, but they're working on that. That, that gives people's attention.
The set off program can go to federal.
Yeah, yeah.
I did tax for quite a while. It does.
Oh, my goodness.
We'll clean you up lunch, I believe.
You're gonna be the fastest one all day.
Come on in early.
That's right, that's all right with you. Uh, I went over the questions with Eric and them, so we can type them out.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you want me to do some stuff that I turned in?
Please.
I got nothing, that's mine, I believe. Nope, we hand these around. We got one more coming in.
What's that coming?
Susan was gonna sit in there, in case we had any questions off some of her.
She's walking.
Yeah.
Left you high and dry, Eric. What, what'd you do to her?
It's all good. She's been very, very helpful past years.
Um, well, I mean, I guess you go ahead and.
Yeah.
Start if you're gonna.
Unless Eric's uncomfortable doing it.
Good.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I, I met with Eric over all these questions, everything, I went over, um, the budget, and Eric will, will say, you know, um, going over the budgets, probably not one of his strongest, he, you know, he, he, he needs help in that aspect.
Yep.
For capital outlay and then stuff like that.
Speaking of help?
Yep.
There she is.
But I think Eric, you talked about the last, you started in twenty-one.
I started in October of twenty.
Twenty, and, and since then, I think your budget has stayed almost relatively flat. You know, other departments have seen increases, is that correct to say? And it's a, you know, for what they do, I think it's kinda unusual, rare to keep it so flat, um, with the size of the budget.
Well, and, and the only time it ever has increased is because sales tax has been up. And they've been able to do more work.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think they did a great job of managing their overtime too.
Oh, excellent.
So I think it was two or three years ago, you guys basically took out all of overtime, so.
We did that about twenty-one, wasn't it?
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's amazing.
So the biggest thing with all of them, they haven't had an increase for weight, wages, and so they've found ways inside their budget to cut out. You know, they've reduced, uh, a mower, they, operator, a greater operator, and still maintain the same service. But the questions, I mean, I thought were actually good by the commission, and so I think it, we went through and did a lot of it. So like the, you know, the first one, like Susan said, a lot of it, um, the sales tax is mandated, other than that, it's not. The noxious weed, which I didn't even realize, they have to sell at a fifteen percent loss, so.
I didn't know that either until.
The more you sell, the more it hurts your budget theoretically, so, um, but that's state law that makes you do that.
And we do have a cash flow problem a cou- a couple of years ago, but we built it into the budget now so that there's not one. I mean, we always make sure we have enough there.
The, the one positive with that though is if people actually spray the noxious weed, it helps us control it throughout the county. That is a, the one positive on the noxious weed.
Yeah. The, uh, you know, they reduced the budget, like I said, they reduced, uh, employees and are really running pretty thin, especially with the flood recently. And so that's kind of, I think you said about thirty percent increase workload, maybe, maybe more.
Oh, probably, yeah.
I did that ways. So, um, with what they've had, they, they've managed it, um.
That's the last two years.
Last two years, yeah.
We got hit real bad last year and then again this year as well, so.
Um, one thing I notice with them is like, when they do repairs for other departments, sheriffs, EMS, stuff like that, they do not charge labor. So they're, they're billing that, eating it out of their budget, and they're paying parts, but they're not charging no labor in departments. So it's kind of a sh- sh- numbers offset a little bit because they don't bill that.
Give, give an example of that.
Uh, sheriff, sheriff department needing water pump or something.
Last week, they needed a injector in their vehicle, and so we, they pu- they pay for the part, but our mechanic installs it at no charge.
Like an injector, I'm assuming six, eight hour job, maybe not, maybe not that much.
Yeah, I, I mean, it took him a good two to three hours to do it.
Normal rate's a hundred and twenty at a, so you know, you add a, it could be, I mean, it could be a thirty, fifty thousand dollar a year between all the departments.
Sure.
They service everything, you know, um.
Is there a way to capture that? Cause there's a cost associated with that.
Um, yeah, I.
Like just writing the hours down?
Cause at the city, didn't they bill out?
It depended, um, generally the, we just did it for all departments. We didn't bill it out, but there was a log so that we could actually see what it was taking to, to do some of the work. The only thing that we bill out from public works is fuel.
Fuel.
Um, other than that, we just look at it as tax dollars. Um, but yes, there's definitely a savings that could be seen by using, if we have a mechanic. Sometimes we don't, I mean, we've had some trouble with keeping a mechanic.
And that's another thing, we, we just hired a mechanic and we did pay him very well. Um, he's very good, or he's been very good so far, but it's costing us twenty-five dollars an hour to keep him on board, I mean, so.
Which is probably not.
That's cheap for a mechanic cost.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Brakes they charge is eighty-five or sixty-five.
Yeah.
Vehicle out there, so.
Brakes, they're one fifty, one sixty.
Are they now?
Yeah.
See that?
Yeah.
In the least, certain situations with like ambulances that you will have to.
Yeah, we have to send them out sometimes. A lot of times with ambulances, the main things we do is, is just servicing, so oil changes and stuff like that, tires. Um, when it becomes a major job, internal oil ring, something like that, we send it to, out and have it worked on by professionals. So if we did departmental bu- bu- billing, county wouldn't save any money, the cost is still the same, it's just costs associated with each department would change, so.
Yeah, the, and one thing they, we've talked about before, like at the city, there was an interlocal agreement for, let's say, rock purchase. The city was buying their rock from the county up until a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And then they stopped doing it again. Um, which, I don't know why. I mean, it, it saved the city a lot of money and it would have, benefit the county as well, so. Um, you know, I was talking to Eric, to, to me, a lot of that's on the commissioners to keep in contact with, with city officials and stuff like that. Um, and I talked to Eric a little bit, um, which would probably disagree a little bit on, um, doing work inside the city limits also. You know, the city's paying private rates or whatever, and they can save a lot of money, but the problem with Eric is, is manpower. They cannot find manpower. It's not even not affordable, but a lot of times they can't even find it.
Manpower and then the material to try and produce to do what they're, making sure we have enough rock to be able to produce our asphalt to do not only city but county. Or not only county, but help city out whenever we could.
We've got to be able to preserve what we have in the county.
Yes.
First, first party.
But this is one of the, um, few areas, I think, the interlocal agreements between the cities, I mean, bought for it.
I authorized it, I'll sign it.
Twenty dollar bottle of water.
There you go.
Need help? Oh, you got it, okay.
But they've really done good, like even their dump truck drivers are not even on, they're on like the county treasurer, they're on thirty-two hour week workloads, um, to cut back some of the pay. So they utilize retired people and stuff like that. Um, Eric's big thing is, the, like everything else, capital outlay, you know, he don't know how to plan the budget for that.
Long term.
Long term, yes. He knows what needs done, but getting the commission to understand, you know, we gotta plan for the future.
Right.
Like you said, culverts.
The, the old galvanized culverts are failing at a high rate. Um, we went to plastic and, uh, they really held up, doing a good job. But we're at the point now that we are seeing culverts, um, fail at a rapid rate due to the acidity, I guess, in our, in the ground, it's eating the bottoms out of the culvert. So then when we have all this heavy rain and it brings the water through the, the culvert, it washes out and around it, and then we have a sinkhole show up in the road, so. We are seeing more and more of that, and we're starting to see large culvert failures, meaning twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight inch tubes, and those get more and more expensive as the.
Like you said before, some of them were not fixed, but maybe patched, patched, maybe not in the right way.
A lot of street signs over the top of holes, um, tubes shoved inside of, uh, rock laid culverts, um, just some weird stuff going on.
You know, before I was, um, when I was working in a different capacity, cause I'm really not able to give a lot of time to Eric anymore just because I have a whole other job to do. Um, we did have a five to ten year plan, and as debt was rolling off, we were, we were scheduling to buy another thing so that we could keep that debt about the same always. And, but it didn't address all the needs, you know, there, it's just expensive to buy some of this equipment. And so, um, but it just seems like that there was a lot of just, maybe it was too overwhelming to look at it because they're, they have a lot of equipment, they've got a lot of leases that are going on, and so when you look at the schedule, you have to look at it, okay, these five years, we've got this debt, okay, it's gonna roll off, and then I'm gonna add this, this, and this to replace these, this equipment. So it was a pretty big schedule when you look at it, um, but there was definitely a plan, just don't know that the plan was recognized.
So the, yeah, the plan was there, but financially, it was just never accounted, yeah.
It could have been, because we had the debt already there, you know, so we're just trying to say.
They were just trying to roll it off, probably.
We spend three hundred and twenty-six thousand a year. We wanna continue to spend that so that we can get this equipment replaced.
And see, that's what I can predict, that's one of the biggest things I saw, all this stuff that you did, and I, like I said, I went back ten years on some things, five years on other stuff. There's no long range plan for any of that.
And you know, to have a equipment reserve or a capital improvements reserve, you're required by law to have a financial.
They, they don't.
So there's no, we. No formal database of all of your equipment?
So I think when she says that they have that, but it's this financial side, that's not, would you agree, that's not there? Like they know what they need replaced, they know when they need to replace it, but there's no money ever being allocated to them to do that.
And there's no fund that can build from year to year. I mean, eh, for example, you have a great year on sales tax or whatever it happens to be, revenue, much better. You could put it over here and build that fund up so that when Eric had a problem, or whomever it happened to be, whatever department had a problem. But you got, they had nothing. I mean, that's sort of scary.
But instead of, but instead of when the sales tax is at a good year, they're like, do more roads.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do more roads in terms of paving?
Paving, yeah.
It has to be paving.
Have to use it immediately.
On the sales tax fund.
And it should be, I, there should be some, like, I don't know, maybe the reservation or not, there should be something that says, it's matter of, even if they put five percent back. Shoot, you know what I'm saying, just a certain amount of money because this, I'm not getting people, they haunt you someday.
You could, you could justify probably a dump truck, um, a lay down machine.
Rollers.
Rollers, off the sales tax, because it is, I mean, you could do some of that.
Yeah.
Um, but you have to be, you have to, you have to really think it through. How is it?
How's it gonna?
Supporting the hard surface roads?
And that's a ten year sales tax?
I don't remember when that rolls out.
Oh, it just got voted on.
Yeah. I don't know how many miles you guys.
Whenever Jim, nineteen?
It, it depends, we try to get around ten miles a year. Some years we get more, some years we are right there at the ten.
Ten miles a year paved?
And then we also wanna do preventative maintenance. So this year, we're gonna back off a little bit on our pavement, but do chip and seal so we can go back to what we started, um, asphalting in twenty-one and put a chip and seal over that so we can preserve what we have to do the preventative maintenance.
And I will say, just from watching these, I didn't talk to you about this, but I noticed, you know, each commissioner has their district, so they request certain roads. Which I'm assuming will cost you a little bit more to take off this job when, in reality, if you could just go continue, continuous, it'd probably save you, and maybe not, I don't know.
My biggest problem with them playing favoritism to their district is we have roads out there that are really, really bad, like horrible. And they need to be addressed before we worry about whose district's what is and, and that stuff, and we don't do that, we.
Coming up for election.
We address the roads that are gonna get you elected, more or less, and I, I don't agree with it, I don't, I don't feel like it's right.
So you guys have no, so at the city, we tiered, we tiered roads. So you guys have no, so at the city, we tiered, we tiered roads, do you guys have anything like that?
We, we have.
Yeah, we, we got it all, there's a plan there as well. And it's got a lot of information in that plan and, and.
So it'd be nice if the commission, like, we did a three year tier, this twenty-one, we're gonna do this twenty-two, and you know, and it, I mean, I guess you can base off area a little bit, but.
But you're not, you're not run by a district.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Does, does commission know, know about your tiered plan?
We presented it, um.
It was.
It may have been when, when it was. Leroy's still here, so.
Yeah, Brandon.
So.
Yes.
David would be the only one that has seen it so far, but, um, the problem in the past is, is when you make a plan, you gotta follow it, and we're not following it.
I understand. When I was part of the Cherokee County government, they had a, uh, a hard road budget every year, and they allocated it to each commissioner. You talk about chaos. That was politics.
Yeah.
So to go on to the landfill, and I, I know David's talked about this quite a bit, uh, you started twenty-one again? And so revenues, twenty, so revenues at the landfill, in twenty-twenty was two hundred and seventeen thousand. Twenty-one, four hundred thousand, twenty-two, almost five hundred. Twenty-four and this year's projected at seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, so it's over tripled since then. And I didn't talk to Eric wide, but being in the trash business, I think that's probably when you got local haulers probably to start coming there.
And he's, I wanna say, he's not gonna give himself kudos, so I will, he's the one that went out and got that.
Yeah, and I will say, cause before that, we tried to, our company come here, and it was just not even thought about, you know, it's, you know, we're, like the landfill is just whatever, local. But you can see by the numbers how much difference it makes to keep local haulers, mass haulers here. So I hope when the commission talks about separating and not separating, they can see what Eric's done just in the last five years towards that, I mean, that's a huge increase.
But why were they gonna change, I mean, I've never understood why they're.
Um, I was at one meeting with David, and, and it was, I was kinda confused a little bit, and I'll say this, so Eric would have to. At that meeting, David said it was hard to work with the director. Well, I asked Eric if David's ever talked to him, and he said before being elected he has, and if not, has not since. So I don't think any commissioner has really talked to Eric about the landfill or Dustin too much.
We addressed that last night in the work session, um, I will give Commissioner Micah. She, she's actually went out and rode around with me and looked at all of our different, um, sites, what we have. Commissioner Tran is in the process of, of doing that, so those two are, are really wanting to be on board to see what's going on. So Commissioner Bierbauer, I invited him last night again to please reach out and let's go look at things, so that way we're all on the same page and understand what goes on day to day in, in, uh, Public Works.
Eric, you might talk about your requirements for the landfill and what you'll have to have in cash reserves.
Um, that's another thing that, um, we got thrown at us last year by the state that we have to have a minimum of two hundred and.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty, somewhere, give or take, right around that area for reclamation, should the landfill ever have to be, um, shut down. So didn't have at the time two hundred and thirty thousand just sitting there for reclamation. So Susan helped us, we've got part of it in there now, we've got other parts in, uh, I believe it's Road and Bridge. We get some FEMA reimbursement, we'll be able to.
It's two oh four.
Is it two oh four, is that what it is?
Stop robbing Peter to pay Paul here.
Right, right.
That's a K A R twenty-eight.
It's a regulation, we gotta follow.
It is.
How often do you, uh, make trips to Allen County with?
Minimum of two times a day, sometimes it's three, sometimes it's, it's four. We do have several out of county, um, customers, we do charge more, like ten dollars more for our out of county per ton.
Yeah, and, and I would recommend, I mean, I, to me, I, I think every five years, ten years, maybe before that, it's good to do a cost analysis on something that's charged revenue, so.
It definitely needs to have a, a increase because Allen County increased their rates a few years ago.
And they did not.
And we did not, so, I mean, you need, we've gotta follow that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you find that your baseline right now, compare it to Allen County, cause that's the, probably one of the cheapest one, and then base your raises some off that and some off other things would be, and then you don't have the, same thing at the city when we did water, you know, no one would do it, you'd have a thirty percent increase all of a sudden. There's just no standard there year to year to look at, and so I think with the landfill, that's something you need, is just a standardized thing, so we're gonna look at this year to see if we need to or not. Two things that the landfill talked about, maybe not, not huge moneymakers, but right now they take all their tires, and have to pay to get them dumped in Allen County. You buy a tire shredder, then they can dump them right here around, and not even have to worry about hauling them over there.
How much is a tire shredder?
I was gonna look that up, and I've looked it up before, cause we looked at buying one.
I wanna say I seen one for around three hundred thousand.
That's, that's new, if, if you go Eric's way, if I used, then.
You can get, you can probably get one for around a hundred.
Hundred, if you.
And so it's just something to look at, I don't know if it's feasible, but one thing you can look at is like, and I could be off here, maybe Susan knows more, but there are grants out there for people. I, I think you can sell that tire stuff also.
Do it just right, yes.
You can do it right, you can sell that for playground.
Depends on how, how it comes out of shredder, there's different kinds of shredders. Uh, I repossessed a shredder down in Cherokee County, and it was the wrong kind of shredder. Sold it for eighty thousand, it had a lot more in it than.
But I think we can open a sale just for tires, um, at the landfill. So we can keep everything there, and then it's, and it's all profit.
So you, I mean, you would save this ten thousand annually, but then you would charge an additional type of fee to take those tires, or what are you charging to take the tires in?
We, it's two hundred per ton right now, I think, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, to me, you do, just see how, you know, what's depreciation on the tire shredder, you know, and then see if it's gonna be worth it, it might not be worth it, you know.
And take a close look at what kind of shredder it is, cause there's different, different product that comes out of it, so.
And something else.
You need to do R O I, and then you can spend on it just to see.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so roughly, what percentage of stuff that comes through the gate, C and D, and what percentage has to be transferred? Do you have a, have an idea on that?
I would say there's probably seventy-five percent M S W. And that's just judging off the last week and a half I spent over there. It, it's definitely, there's definitely more M S W than C and D comes in. Maybe not by weight, but by loads.
Yeah, and that's the important thing.
Yeah.
And they are having their, um, debt service roll off next year for.
Yes, in March, yeah, and I believe it's on this back page.
But the only thing they're asking for is really either a three percent or five percent increase in the budget. And I don't think you've ever had a increase for salary in the budget in the five years you've been.
Last year, we had a little, just a little one.
Put the benefits on there, like I asked, you're the first person to bring that today.
I don't know if the percentages are right, but that's what we went off of for the.
Yeah, it's close, it was, it was right four years ago for sure.
Capers may, may not be.
We just keep rolling with it.
Yeah, capers is off the chest a little bit.
We might have had help with those numbers.
If they're good, we'll, we'll take the credit.
You're, you're good, you're, you're close enough.
I'll say this while Susan's here, I asked your opinion, I mean, I think Baker Tilly could help him out, cause I don't think you have enough time to do all the long term and all that stuff. And I think having a second, I mean, would you agree that would help?
To be quite honest, for the pay that I'm getting, and I'm, and I'm gonna be blunt about that, for the pay that I'm getting, I won't do it. And, and I, Eric and I have talked about that, it's not fair to me to spend seventy, eighty hours a week here anyway.
Well, we just talked about people getting burnt out from working so much. I mean, for you being a financial, do you see a downside if they hired Baker Tilly?
Um, the cost, I think, I think there's maybe some other groups out there that could be cheaper.
Okay, so, yeah, not Baker, so just a financial?
Yes, when, when you're spending thirty-six thousand dollars for one department, I think that's a little excessive. I think we could hire our auditors for thirty-five hundred dollars, and they'd probably say, hey, here's a good plan. Well, yes, I get you, and auditor. I, I, I think there's resources out there, and I think we need to, we need to look.
I think that'd be one recommendation Eric would have, that would, he would feel a lot more comfortable.
Nothing against Baker Tilly, I just think.
Yeah, and I don't mean that, I just mean cause they're here, but, um, yeah, some other something would be.
I, I know, I, I will tell you this, a lot of the departments depend very heavily on me to help them. This is not an area, I mean, they're doing the day to day stuff, they'll always come in and say, what do you think about this? And I will give them my time if I can.
Well, it's, it's, you know, a red share of deeds shouldn't, I mean, finance is not their background, insurance is not their background, you know, the city do have a finance person, so that's what is missing here, I think, with a lot of the budgets, because that's not their expertise.
We did have one. Recently.
Well, and I don't think you understand the importance of that.
No.
I mean, that's my whole, I mean, I, I, I have become a little frustrated with some of this stuff.
Without forecasting and projecting, it's just, it's.
Yeah, volunteer, it's a college.
Ignoring, ignoring this Road and, Road and Bridge plan has a hidden cost.
That's right, it does, do they not understand that?
That's just, that's just part of the election cycle, you know, every two years or something, you know, so.
Or every one year is.
Well, they could have supplemented your general, your general operation, we had some, we were considered a low, um, COVID receiver. So our money, all of our money could have gone into the general fund to supplement operations, all of the money.
And I will say this, I'm hesitant to say, cause Eric will have FEMA money coming in, but once again, like COVID money, I hope commissioners realize it's, as, I'll reference David Shepard, it's pennies from heaven, so you don't, you don't budget salaries, you don't budget long term things for that, so.
Also, that money is, is a reimbursement, not, it's not money given to us, it's a reimbursement, we had to spend our money to.
We still have bridges and infrastructure that we need to address once we have.
Understand that that is for a specific purpose.
Well, we hope they do, we don't know yet, we haven't received it, so.
Yeah, you don't pay them, it takes three or four years to get your money.
Besides public safety, is there anything more critical than Road and Bridge in the county?
I've got a presentation for that later.
How are they gonna get here if you hear the presentation, if they don't have Road and Bridges?
Exactly.
Gonna swim here?
How are they gonna get their money without a clerk and a treasurer?
Taxation is pirate at the front door. They come and get it, on the road, great, really great Road and Bridges.
Oh, I'm getting hungry.
What, what's this building repair, is that just a fund for, for you have something that needs to be repaired?
We bought the building north of the shop.
Of the Nelson Building?
Yeah, we would like to turn that into offices. The building needs restrooms and A C and heat and all that stuff put in it, and then we would do most of the construction stuff as far as building the walls and, and that kinda stuff, but, um, that is what that's put in there for, so we can, so we can try to get some offices built over there. And that's just a guesstimate on what it might cost.
That's turnkey, there's different phases for all of it and to go.
So fifty thousand and you're done, like you don't have to do it again in the next budget year, or?
That's, that's what we're hoping for, yes.
Yes, um, we are very, very, very tight on space out there. Thirty, forty guys at a time in one bathroom is interesting, so we do have some porta pottas that we use, so.
We also have both building repair, repairs and landfill budget, um, there's some damage to the building that's out there now that we're trying to get fixed. Some red iron got hit, and it's all cranked up and bent, we need the doors replaced, so that's what that's for.
Isn't it large enough when you do expand, like the bathroom, did you make six stalls bathroom or?
Uh, we're gonna, our plan is to put three bathrooms in, and then a wash closet, um, with washer dryer and then.
The three hole bathroom?
Three hole bathrooms, yes. And one of them may have multiple stalls in it, depending on size and if we can fit.
Have you, uh, have any of you seen the conditions of their facility?
Not for fifteen or twenty years, when the school bus was dropping me out there.
I will tell you, we have a holding tank, and when it is full, it comes into my office, and we'll leave it at that, so.
And when it rains, you have to squeak, you have to squeak.
We have to squeaky the floors, sometimes if it rains hard enough, it'll come clear up into the offices, but we, uh, we make do with what we have. That's, that's what we have, so that's what.
We gotta take care of it.
But I think it's good, this is good, this is good discussion. Because you have, in the past, you've had one person, they, they may come in and plead their case, but their direct reports are to commission. You have a finance person coming in and pleading their case, and it, it is truly, and, and then I have always said, this, this type of government's kinda broken, because it's very political. Um, and it's in every office, it's not just the commission, it's in every office, there's silos everywhere. And I'll talk about that a little bit later when I come.
I think a lot of it is, because when you present, you probably don't have much communication beforehand. You come here and all of a sudden, you're like, you know, everyone's watching, and you're like, man, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, when it really should start, I mean, months and months ago, you know.
Yes.
Right.
And it was mentioned clear back in March that we need to start budgeting.
Well, and another thing, I, I assume, give away, and I think every commissioner should go to every single office, set up an appointment, not walk in like they do in Washington D.C. Single office and set up a time and find out what they do, or.
Yes.
What it takes to run the place, et cetera. I mean, that's a first thing.
Well, we won't bore these gentlemen with our politics anymore, so.
One more thing that we do need to bring to light, and that is at the landfill, we need to strongly, strongly, strongly consider purchasing another trailer. And the reason I say that is Allen County has put us on notice that on high wind days, they will be shut down. We have another trailer, we can store more M S W or trash in the trailer along with.
How many trailers do you have now?
Two.
And you run two a day, so if they're closed down, you'll have to shut down the landfill.
A lot of days we run three anymore.
Will have, been. The building will be full.
How much is a trailer repair?
I thought I had that on that.
While you guys are looking, the, the benefit, employee benefit of free dumping is, was, got, is waived?
It's waived, okay. Roughly a hundred and fifty, and that's a guess on a trailer.
They're doing it anyway, yeah, and that was brought to light a couple of years ago when I started, you know, they were, we were not taxing it appropriately.
Yeah, you guys did not charge sales, or you guys were charging sales tax, so that's my biggest thing, I was in the trash business, you guys were charging sales tax, I'm like, you guys are not supposed to charge sales tax.
On what?
The, the trash out there.
No, I think we have to, we have to charge.
Or so it was the other way around then.
No, what we were doing is allowing our employees to work dump, and so that is an employee benefit.
Oh, you have to.
So I have to put that on their payroll, so I have to know how many loans they brought in, what was the cost?
I'll, I'll tell you, there's been some, you had, you had one county employee have a trash business that was dumping out there. You had one commissioner that had storage units that would dump out there, you had one commissioner that's in construction business would haul their stuff out there. So it was abused and abused, so.
Yikes.
But these are things that don't get said, so.
They had to get stopped.
As of last night?
Stopped.
No, it stopped two or three weeks ago.
Yeah, it stopped.
Thank you, gentlemen, great work, thank you. Josh, thanks a lot for that.
I think so.
If not, you'll be around again, we'll, we'll find you.
Thanks, Josh.
I'm gonna stop this meeting, and then when you guys get back, will someone come grab me and I'll start?
Okay, alright.